This time, we'd like to call the order of the regular city council meeting for February 26, 2018. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let the roll call show that everyone is present. And we'll move forward to the approval of minutes for February 12, 2018.
I have a few, Dan.
Go ahead. Councilmember Kibble?
Okay, the page 10, the end of the first paragraph, says "would be able to glean," and it should be glean. Page 11, the second paragraph, the second line, it says "we are not in the stakes," and it should be straits. And there was one more. On page 15, the, the end of the, second from the last paragraph, has stepped up, it should say "under compromised circumstances" instead of "with our compromising circumstances." That's all I had. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I have one too.
Councilmember Parisian?
On page 7. The first paragraph about halfway down the line, Attorney Wilhelm speaking, and it says, "we created the frozen back," it should be frozen bank. Thanks, Lisa.
I believe I have one as well.
All right, go ahead, Councilmember.
Page 8, I believe, first paragraph, I believe Councilman Kurtzwell was purported to say the sale was negotiated without council's involvement, not with.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To the city clerk, were any changes provided to you that were made off the record for the minutes?
No.
Thank you.
Okay, on page 7, first paragraph, five, five sentences down, wasn't changed in the personal manual, that should read personnel.
So, yeah. Thank you. Councilmember Richards, do you have something?
Yes. I believe it's on page 11. I can't find the line here. But anyway, I'd like it to read where I talked about the three-phase electrical coming into the water plant over there for the voltage. I'd like it to read that I mentioned it was 13,000 volts, 13,200 volts, which was emitted. It's too much trouble, I hope. I usually don't complain about anything if it's misquoted, I don't care, but that one I thought should be mentioned.
Does anyone have anything else?
I move the minutes as amended.
A second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? Approval of the bills? We do not have any. So now, we move on to the approval of the agenda for this evening.
I just had one question. With Mr. Richards' three entries in here, there's really very thin documentation on what you're, you'd like to speak to. Is there a chance that we could do this some other time, where you actually provide us with something where we might be able to weigh in during those discussions?
Would you like to speak? Okay, I'm, my plan is to just bring these items up as a discussion topic. Certainly do that, Dan, off the top of my head. I granted there, I don't have anything on one of them, but I've got some, I do have some substantial things.
Well, circling items in the bills is hardly evidence of anything, so, well, all right, let's just have them as discussions, I guess.
Yeah.
I move the agenda as presented.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? At this time, we'll open for public comment. Please be sure to state your address and name.
Mr. Mayor and council, good evening. I'm Randy Clark. I am president of the South Lyon Community Schools Board of Education, and our address is next door. I have with me this evening Mrs. Laura Hewitt, who is treasurer of the board, and Mrs. Kathleen Harmon, who is a fellow finance and administration committee member. And we would like to quickly make a prepared statement regarding the school resource officer at South Lyon High School. And with that, I'll hand it over to Mrs. Hewitt, please.
Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this evening. The last several weeks have once again been a challenging time for our country, our educators, our parents, and our students. We want to take this opportunity to thank each of you for your continued support of South Lyon School District. On-site presence of law enforcement in each one of our schools brings added comfort to our community. In early 2017, the South Lyon Board of Education approved a budget that allowed for placement of one school resource officer at South Lyon East High School and one south, one at South Lyon High School, assuming a shared financial responsibility with Lyon Township and the city of South Lyon. Very quickly, Deputy Tom Biggers, a member of Oakland County Sheriff's Department, was placed onsite at South Lyon East. Feedback from parents, students, staff, and administration has been nothing but positive. We owe the same to our staff and our student body at South Lyon High School. Our intent for coming forward this evening is to advise this council that we, the South Lyon Board of Education, have solicited assistance from Lyon Township to move forward with a full-time Oakland County Sheriff Deputy at South Lyon High School effective March 1. We ask for your support regarding jurisdiction, and where possible, we ask for your financial support. Thank you this evening.
Thank you.
But, Dean, if you have any specific questions, we certainly can entertain those. But other than that, I think our statement speaks fully to the situation. We understand the situation the city is in, and we do certainly appreciate all the support that the South Lyon Police Department has given to our schools, and we really do hope to continue to work in the same manner, moving forward. The situations that have arisen give us no recourse at this time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
I believe we'll address any questions in council comment.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very, very much. Wow.
Good evening. My name is Mike Corlocker, 223 East Lake Street. I'm also the pastor of First Presbyterian Church of South Lyon. Today, during third hour, there was a lockdown at South Lyon High School. I found out about it on Facebook because my daughter, who tried to text me, couldn't get through to me because she was in a dead zone in the school. And I've come to find out there are several dead zones in that school. The commons area is a dead zone. The Chinese classroom is a dead zone. There are hallways near lockers that are a dead zone. So I'd like the school board to do an investigation and fix it because our kids are scared and parents are scared. And when there's a lockdown that's not planned, our kids need to be able to get ahold of their parents. Forty-eight minutes, my kid was in a corner waiting to find out if it was going to be safe again. For this council, I think it's wonderful. The Lyon Township is going to flip the bill for this city. I think it sucks that they have to. Kids are afraid. They don't trust the adults because we haven't done anything in 20 years, and now the city can't pay for half of a police officer.
Comments are noted. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Ryan Lehrer, 716 Grand Court. I'm here tonight to discuss a matter that I have since learned, since I was at the last city council meeting, I have learned that a Clemis report was requested by Councilwoman Mary Parisian on Joyce Calosi, a public citizen not currently in public office. Why was this done by you, Mary? You had no intention on accepting Joyce as a candidate before the interview process even started, as this is indicated in your emails to Glenn Kibble. You did not disclose to the mayor or council of your filing or what you had in your possession prior to the interview. You also did not disclose this to Joyce Calosi. When you applied for a position, it clearly states you must go through a background check. A background check was not required to obtain the seat of Joe Rizzi, and you only filed against one candidate, nobody else. Are you stalking Joyce? Because your behavior clearly indicates a person with some various serious problems. I also have filed an attorney grievance to the Michigan Attorney Grievance Commission for your actions on council. I've asked them to do a full investigation on your conduct for the full time you've been on council for ethics violations. You took an oath to conduct yourself ethically. It is my opinion that you have not done that in this case. I am also requesting that a full investigation be conducted by council for ethics violations pertaining to the city charter and the city code, and it needs to be conducted outside of Johnson &amp; Rosati due to a conflict of interest in this case. I am also requesting that Councilwoman Mary needs to be suspended without pay until this investigation is complete. If the investigation concludes no ethics were violated, then her pay should be restored to council's discretion. I hope someday, Councilwoman Mary, you'll take some responsibility for your actions because up to now, you have attacked two public citizens and have showed no remorse. That, to me, tells me a lot about your character and unbecoming of the newly-elected lawyer of the Michigan Bar. Thank you for your, thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you, Ryan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Joyce Cloisi. I would like to thank everyone who came out last week and this week as well, and everyone who has reached out with their support. I have been overwhelmed by the number of people and organizations who have come out to also demand accountability from the city of South Lyon in terms of a formal apology to the community and undergoing training to update the city government on old, basic civil rights laws and practices. Some groups I'd like to thank, in no particular order, some groups and people I'd like to thank in no particular order who have voiced their support are the ACLU, Mothering Justice, Kathleen Norton Stock, she actually brought this to thousands of prominent LinkedIn and Twitter followers nationally and internationally, Julia Pulver, candidate for state rep, Haley Stevens, candidate for US Congress, Jenny Byer, Julie Paquette, Lisa Riedel, Heather Bruegel, Joe Patrello, candidate for state rep, Vanessa Torres, Jim Ananich, Senate Democratic Leader, Erica Geis, State Representative. And I'd also like to thank Mark Cavett, I'm sure a lot of you have enjoyed his articles in the Oakland Press, and he covered this more than I could have possibly expected, and Channel 7 also for running the news article, also, which I did not, not expect. There are many more, but these are a few that the, I might, blah, there are many more, but these are a few the majority of council may find interesting. It is shocking that if the community is not adequate to compel the majority of council to think they are on the wrong side of history and desperately need training, that the opinion of these prominent people has not moved them to action. They apparently continue to feel that they are beyond reproach. Myself and many others are continuing to follow this issue and are curious how long it will take for the mayor and the majority of council to show they value civil rights laws in a meaningful way. If they are not even willing to undergo some, most likely mediocre, training of their own discretion, it is difficult to be convinced that they're taking this matter seriously, even in light of the fact they are now the subject of an active case with the Michigan Department of Civil Rights. That's right, the state of Michigan is knocking, Dan Peltchat. Lead your city into the mid-1960s, maybe the mid-1970s, anytime now. I'll move now to a specific example of a citizen reproaching council for their behavior that I obtained legitimately via FOIA. I don't know the person who submitted it, and I won't share their name for their privacy, but I think the response they received from Councilman Glenn Kibble is intriguing. It states, and this was sent on Tuesday, the 23rd, to Glenn Kibble. "Hi there. You are the only one of three male city council candidates with your email address online. I am appalled at the line of questioning from the city councilman Carl Richards to candidate Joyce Cloisi. In this political environment with poor examples popping up daily and continued uncovering of abuse and discrimination, there is a need for men," men is in capital letters, "to stand up for these injustices. You didn't do that tonight. I certainly hope that as a fellow council member going forward, that you will stand up to bully cowards like Carl Richards. You must have a difficult job. I will keep you in my prayers." That's where the email from the person ends. I would like to read you Glenn's response, which was sent on January 24th. Back to the person. Hello, Mrs., I'll skip the name. "I have to accept your evaluation of Mr. Richards' inartful questions of Ms. Cloisi as appalling to you. I would imagine you aren't very familiar with Mr. Richards because although I would call his questions unfortunate and irrelevant, I couldn't call them appalling because that would inherently assume they were meant to be demeaning or disrespectful, and Carl is not a mean-spirited man. I got the impression he was trying to assess Ms. Cloisi's schedule availability, even though she had just explained she can accommodate making meetings with forewarning of the schedule. I was equally surprised why Carl would ask Bill Powell if he still lives with his mother, even though Bill is a grown man with a wife and children and figure only heaven knows. I can assure you, Carl is not a bully coward. He is a kind, caring man who wants to help improve his community, but, in my opinion, but is not, in my opinion, equal to the task." Equal to the task? Who are you to decide who is equal to the task again, Glenn? This is an elected council. It's not a social club for Glenn Kibble or Mary Parisian to seat as they see fit, as with Mr. Kennedy. Sorry, Mr. Kennedy, you seem like a reasonable man, perhaps knowingly or unknowingly caught up in this situation. Anyway, not for them to seat via stalking behaviors and leveraging the police for information. Carl Richards came in a close second to you in the election. Sorry you and Mary didn't get to handpick him, but as you stated in your email to Mary Parisian, also obtained via FOIA, you are now, quote, "free to make fair decisions now that Mr. Kennedy is seated." I assume you and Mary are the ones who will be defining what is fair, what fair means. As you made it clear in this email, the voters' choices don't mean squat to you, and they don't know what they're doing." You continue in the letter. "He was recruited and his campaign was supported by people on city council that expected him to be easy to get a vote," as he was, which expected him to be easy to get to vote as he was told, "to empower themselves by creating a majority, not because they saw him as a strong leader with ideas to move the city in a better direction. Carl was elected by people in the city that had no idea who he was or what he stood for, but because of the endorsement of manipulative people they trusted on council." That's a comment from a seated city council member. You aren't exactly honest to this person. Perhaps you forgot, Glenn, and you surely didn't mention it, that Carl's vote served you very well at the interview, as Carl voted for your motion to seat Mr. Kennedy. It's interesting that you would fail to mention that to this person, as you were of the majority that Carl was voting with that night. It's strange that you wouldn't mention, as this seems very relevant. It is interesting you're so derogatory of Mr. Richards' abilities, but yet his vote directly allowed you to seat your applicant. Very many of the same people who voted for you voted for Carl, and for you to disparage them as ill-informed is inaccurate, in my opinion. It's a very small pool of voters, so don't get too arrogant. The people that you're insulting in this email are a lot of your own supporters." The letter actually continues from there. Glenn says, "I have a long history of standing up to bullies, and I will continue to do so, but Carl is not one of them. He is simply a man in a role that exceeds his skill sets. I appreciate you reaching out to me. We may not agree on this subject, but I felt it was important to give you my observations and suggest there are at least two sides to the story." Considerably Glenn Kibble, South Lyon City Councilman. Your characterization of Mr. Richards as a man who exceeds his role does not reflect ill on Mr. Richards. It reflects negatively on you. Only yourself and the majority of council, as you've forgotten, the voters elected him. It wasn't for you or Mary or anyone else on council to decide. That is bullying. Bullying is degrading someone, as you're doing with Mr. Richards in this email. You're lying to yourself, thinking you're someone who stands up to bullying, when you're bullying so, in this publicly available email. Yourself and the majority of council can't even condescend to agree that you need training on civil rights matters, as Mr. Richards brought to our attention, perhaps inadvertently. You hold apparently everyone in low regard. Me? You said also in your, in an email, "I'm not a good fit for your board," in an email. Mr. Richards, the voters, the only one you seem to have any regard for is Mary, who has the police run criminal searches on my background, which feels a lot like being stalked to dig for dirt and then screams "I'm a liar." We see what character you like. I imagine Mr. Richards has not seen this email before, but I'm sure he's found it revelatory and amusing that while you find him so inadequate, you all are sharing a council table. I repeat, this is an elected council. I'm certainly not here to defend Mr. Richards, but to share this communication, to show how deep the discrimination and lack of respect for the voting population goes in this city. Perhaps once the majority of council and the mayor are able to get their own house in order, perhaps once they are able to get their own house in order, and that's what's preventing them from moving forward into the middle of the last century with regard to civil rights.
Unbelievable.
My name is Charles Duty, 40 Hillcrest Road, Lyon Township. I'm a former city resident. Tonight, I want to speak to you about the issue and concern of the question, "Do you have any personal relationships with anyone on council?" as was posed during the candidate's interview by Mary Parisian to Joyce Calosi. It must be remembered that the question was only asked to the female candidates and not the male candidates. Being an openly gay male, I have had many job interviews, and I've conducted many job interviews, and I can assure you that the question as posed was designed to be a sexual orientation question. I have never been asked, nor have I ever asked, any such question. A fishing expedition, to say the least. Very inappropriate, very discriminatory, and very wrong. It's nobody's business what one's personal relationships are. The matter before council was who is qualified to be seated on council. If you Google the word "personal," the Oxford Dictionary, number 2, clearly defines it, and I quote, "of or concerning one's private life, relationships, and emotions, rather than one's career or public life." End quote. This line of questioning was totally out of line, unacceptable, and even worse, the underlying attempt to discredit Ms. Calosi based on anything other than her qualifications to be seated at this table was unacceptable. To indicate to a candidate that their Facebook photos indicate that there is a personal relationship is wrong. To go and file a Freedom of Information Act on a Clemis report, which I still have not been able to get my hands on the entire document to understand the agreement of the Clemis, for only one candidate, is wrong. It's very apparent that there was an attempt by Ms. Parisian to do nothing less than stalk Joyce Calosi, and that, too, is very wrong. I'm appalled to think that a qualifying factor of a possible official in 2018 would be his or her orientation. I mean, whose business is it? Who cares? It's so obvious to everyone that there was determination to discredit and defame Joyce Calosi, not on her qualifications, not on her desire to help make South Lyon better for everyone, not because she's interested in being part of the solution to the problems, but because of who she had personal relationships with. What happened here is wrong. What happened here is another direct reflection of the good old boy network at its best, making decisions behind the scenes and then bringing those decisions to the table and making them a reality. Let me say that I'm disgusted and appalled with the actions of Mary Parisian, that perhaps she needs to be removed from her seat. Maybe it's time for Mary Parisian to step aside and allow people that have a real desire to make South Lyon better to serve and serve more fairly. These questions, regardless of who they're asked to, intimidates a variety of people who may be interested in coming out and serving. Surely, there is not an intent here to preclude all from consideration. Was there, or is there, an attempt to indicate that diversity at this table is not welcome? If you do not fit into the norm, we don't want you here? I surely hope that wasn't the case. She did not deserve this treatment. The objective now is to make certain through teaching, through education, and through change, that no other person will ever suffer at the hands of an elected public servant again. Mr. Mayor, with all due respect, I do not know your personal knowledge of human resources. I do not know how involved you were in the line of questioning that took place, nor how the selection process was determined. What I do know is that you, sir, were elected to serve all the residents of this community. This is your city council. This type of behavior by Mary Parisian is not acceptable. It does not hold power with the city code of South Lyon, Section 2-72, which speaks to the responsibilities of a public office, where it reads, and I quote, "They are bound to observe in their official acts the highest standards of morality and to discharge faithfully the duties of their office, regardless of personal considerations, recognizing that the public interest must be their primary concern. Their conduct in both their official and private affairs should be above reproach." End quote. I'm here to say that Mary Parisian is not doing the city, its citizens, fellow members of council, or you, Mr. Mayor, any favors. It is a mistake that this line of questioning was even allowed, but there is an opportunity for redemption, and that being acted upon, we move on, put the mistake behind us. Forgiven, but never forgotten. This is nothing less than unethical behavior. For those reasons, I call upon the city council to open an independent investigation, suspend Mary Parisian without pay until conclusion of the investigation. In closing, I leave you with words to live by from Ellie Weasel, and she said, and I quote, "Take sides. Neutrality helps the oppressed, never the victim. Silence encourages the tormentor, never the tormented." Time's up in South Lyon, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for your time and attention.
Mike Kramer, 963 Hinnan Creek Drive, South Lyon, Michigan. My apologies, I don't have a fair statement to read. I do have some questions for the school board. The SRO that you're putting in March 1st, do you know what the cost associated with that is and what the share is going to be? The school board's going to pay for that?
I'm going to ask that you ask those questions of our superintendent.
Okay. Because I know we had that discussion when I was on council, so. Second point I want to make, I, too, had a son at South Lyon High School today that went through the lockdown, and the only, the only, I guess, maybe thinking down the road is the parents were all receiving notifications of the lockdown from their kids. It'd be nice if the school actually sent something out. I know there's, you know, it's more of the social media, everybody knew about it, but we didn't know about it from the school. So if that's something that could be looked at in the future, notifying the parents, especially if it's a malfunction or a draw, I know the school, they had to make sure everything was good, but we were getting a lot of worried texts from our kids, and I was just wondering if there's a way the school board or the community schools can come up with a system that would notify parents in advance. Because, same thing, I was in Detroit, and I got a text, and I was like, what the heck's going on? And finally, I just wanted to point out that it's amazing, as I was listening to all this today, that comments made by a sitting council member during questioning is not focused essentially on that council person, but all the comments are now attacking the board, the council. And I just, I find it amazing that we've gone from statements made from one councilman during questioning of a potential city council candidate have now involved everybody else except the gentleman that actually asked the questions. I've sat here today, listening to the comments made by everybody, I have not heard anybody say, "We want Carl Richards to resign," for the statements he made. I'm hearing calls for Mary's resignation, suspension, Glenn's, the mayor's, but I haven't heard anybody say Carl but I haven't heard anybody say, "Carl Richards. You ask those inappropriate questions, you need to resign." I'm just wondering who's actually running this. Thank you.
And with that, we'll move forward to Old Business and the discussion of downtown.
Good evening.
Hey, Bob.
Hello, Bob.
Once again, everybody has a copy of the report, but I'm going to touch on just a couple items. Mentioned in the report that we've started the process to meet with individually with the five problem buildings downtown. And again, for the record, those five problem buildings are 110 Detroit Street, 111, and 113 North Lafayette, 135 East Lake, 333 South Lafayette, and 450 North Lafayette. The reason I'm mentioning those is because it's interesting. We're getting a lot of interest by some of the owners. Even before we've been able to contact them, they're starting to contact us. So we're going to proceed to meet with each of the property owners. And face-to-face is our strategy. And we just received the report on 110 Detroit Street. So we'll be reviewing that report, getting with the city attorney, and back in touch with that owner as our next step. We've had a lot of good discussions in the last week with people. Maybe it's spring fever, but women's clothing, wine bars, and antiques are approaching us. So it's good. Seems to be that if I talk too much about it, it seems to jinx it. But we're getting a lot of interest, so it's a good thing. These are new people. A whole new wine bar, a new women's clothing store, and two different antique shops. So we're going to pursue them and look at our two spaces that we have available. And of course, we're still hoping that the Bonner Estate puts those two buildings up, gets the real estate sign up, so that we can have two more spaces eventually for people that want to do business. We had a very good week with two new restaurants that have approached us. These are high-profile people that have asked for confidentiality, but it's very exciting. I will say that they are now talking to property owners, and they're actually very interested in a couple of these properties. Should one of the owners, or two of the owners, or any of the owners of these five buildings like to, and I will be giving all of them the names. We talked about that in these meetings, of the restaurants that are interested. We would love to have them purchase one of those buildings, if possible. That's really all I have under downtown. Are there any questions?
I got a quick one for you. I'd heard that KV Sports was moving to the South Lyon resale shop. Is that?
Yes, yes, that was a case.
Is that in process?
I think they'll be in there, they're going to start to move in Thursday.
Okay.
We really weren't, I wasn't involved so much. The Masonic Temple, they know Abe Ayub. And so Abe knows KV Sports, KV Sports. Was not going to renew their lease. The lease rates are going up, I was told, in the Bush. I forget the name of the plaza there.
Dale Plaza, yeah.
Brookdale Plaza. So the rates are going up, so people are looking for new space.
Okay. Thanks, Bob.
It kind of happened overnight.
Right, no, for sure. Councilmember Kurt Swell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I heard there's a furniture store possibly taking a look at coming in. I think we have One Penny here in town, or whatever that Oak Place.
Ten Penny, yeah.
Oak Place. It's modern, it's five or six steps above what's downtown. Have you heard anything about that?
They haven't talked to us. They might be talking to some of the strip center owners, but they haven't talked to me. There was another furniture store, a repurposed furniture store, actually an HGTV personality. I was looking at possibly putting a store in town. But that's the only furniture-type store that I'm aware of. So yeah, hopefully, we'll get in touch with the other store.
Yeah, hopefully, we'll get an updated, modern furniture store in town.
Because we're going to need to fill spaces. It's going to be
That would be nice.
Interesting to see what the rates, how much they're going up in the Brookdale Plaza, because we don't want that whole plaza vacant for too long.
Right. Thanks, Bob. Does anyone have anything else for that?
I was just going to ask, I would love to see these prior to our meeting, if at all possible, if you could email them to us.
I send those to Lloyd.
Can you just email them to us as well?
We could do that.
They could be in the packet then, and we could have some prior knowledge. So any questions this might spur, we could act on.
Mr. Mayor, most of the DDA directors, or I should say, most of his material is included in the weekly report.
In that, in your weekly report? It doesn't seem like it's broke down quite as extensively as this. Perhaps I just glanced over it.
He may have some additional material, but it probably would be best if he submitted that information to me, and it would go out in the weekly report.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Thanks, Bob.
Just to let you know. KV Sports has actually started putting stuff in the windows, which is really quite nice. When you drive downtown, you see that every window is filled. Very nice that they went ahead and did that ahead of time.
I had a good talk with the owner, George, I forget his last name. But George and I talked, and I said, "You're coming into the downtown environment. We'll expect merchandise store windows and quality signage." And he submitted some really good things.
Great.
Great. What an improvement over the resale shop.
Be interesting.
Yeah, that's nice.
Okay. Old Business Number Two, GFL USA Amendment and Extension of Solid Waste Contract.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Wilhelm.
I will tackle this one. You've been provided with some basic information. This is an amendment and extension of the current solid waste contract that the city has with GFL. You've been provided with a letter from me. Mr. Sapo from Rosok is not in attendance, nor is Mr. Caramano from GFL. They were advised of the amendment. We've exchanged information with Mr. Sapo really working as a facilitator, given his role. It was his indication that my last set of changes, which is the clean document you've got, was acceptable to him, but I have not heard anything directly from GFL. The big point here is, in January, council authorized us to pursue a four-year contract based on the information that had been outlined at that stage. We think that this, I think this amendment and extension does that. And primarily, one of the big things is to make sure that the contractor, given the change from Duncan to Rizzo to GFL, is reflected, and then updating the recycling component and the term. So we now go from three-year extensions to four-year. So this will be a four-year term originally, and then you can have an option for a four-year extension. And then the prices are consistent with the meeting that the city manager had and the memo that's been outlined. So at this point, the agreement is acceptable to me. I don't see there's any reason that council can't approve that. I just wanted to let you know, I haven't heard anything definitive from GFL, but they have had some input in what this document looks like.
All right. Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Kennedy.
Okay, so I have a bit of a concern on page four of this document, where it states that, you know, GFL is going to provide 2,000 recycling carts at no charge to city residents. And thereafter, any carts they provide to the city will be charged at $75 each. I'm not sure why they would be providing any carts to the city. We don't, in turn, provide those to the residents. So if a resident beyond that 2,000 wants that cart, I would think they would be buying that directly from Sears or from GFL. The other question I would have, and this took place before I joined the council, if they can provide 2,000 carts that are of a $75 value, I would rather have the $150,000 that that represents reduced off our contract cost and let them keep the carts. Just food for thought on my part.
Can I say something? Councilmember Richards.
I got to agree with you, Steve. That struck me as awfully funny. Why would, who set the figure at 2,000, who arbitrarily decided in a city with a population of 11,000 that we're going to give the big 64-gallon carts to the first 2,000 people that apply? And then everybody else gets to pay $75 that wants one? Okay, there's something funny about that, okay? Steve has indicated, okay? I don't know, it doesn't sit too well with me. But overall, if the council likes it, you know, I suppose we should approve it. But it's just something that caught my eye also.
Councilmember Parisian.
Tim, I have two questions for you. Well, one of them's more of a comment, one of them's a question. So if you're looking on page two, Section 2, 3A, and it's going to be subsection B, "Granting or Request for Contract Extensions Shall Be at the Sole Discretion of the City and shall not be contestable or appealable." Does that raise a due process issue? Because if they're entitled to an extension, and then we don't allow them the opportunity to appeal it, is that an issue, or is that something?
It provides control to extend solely within the city. So if you want to send it out for bid, you have that right.
Okay. And then if you go down, two more paragraphs, to subsection three, it says, "The agreement shall be provided to the city of South Lyon." I believe that's supposed to be, "Agreement shall be provided to the city of South Lyon." So just for grammatical purposes, add the two. Thank you.
Councilmember Kurt Swell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With respect to due process, that's a contractual element in the contract. Due process is generally found in criminal matters. You find it in constitutional matters. But when you're looking at a contract, the due process can be contracted out. You can bargain that. That's actually a term that can be bargained out of the contract. I would like to propose at this time that we postpone this and allow the city attorney to address the issues presented by both Councilmen Mr. Richards and Mr. Kennedy. So I'm going to move that this matter be postponed until the first meeting of April to allow the city attorney to address the issues presented by both Councilman Mr. Kennedy, raised by Councilwoman Parisian, and by Councilmember Richards. Yes?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I don't think we're going to need that long. I wish that GFL's representative were here. And I don't want to speak out of school, but I think there is a, the concept here is that they, through the length of the contract, they are willing to provide those recycling carts, and it's worked into your cost in this agreement. And it's only, they really are willing to do that up to a certain threshold. And after that, it's a charge to the city. So it's essentially passed through to your residents in some fashion.
Well, Tim, can you give verification of that? And give it to Mr. Kennedy? Okay, then I'm going to go ahead and continue to postpone it to no later than, to no later than the first meeting in April. If you get your answer sooner and you're ready to bring it back up, that'll be fine. But at least you can address people's comments.
Yeah, just as a point of information.
Councilmember Kennedy, please.
I spoke to the city clerk about this, and we have not operated that way in the past as far as passing through costs on those receptacles. So this would be a whole new effort that we would have to undertake. For $75, you know, they're going to give it to us. If a resident wants that, and they're not part of the 2,000, they should deal directly with GFL. Secondly, there's nothing in this contract that provides for any verification for them on the 2,000 that they've committed. You know, if we're going to get 2,000 distributed, I'm sure we would like to see a list of the addresses to which those carts were actually passed out, not just a claim that we passed out 2,000 carts.
Councilmember Kivel.
I have two comments, actually. First off, this contract is with the city. It's not with our residents. So all of these things being funneled through the city, I think are perfectly appropriate. Just like we don't ask citizens to call Rizzo themselves, or GFL now, themselves. People call City Hall, and Phyllis takes it upon herself to get things straightened out. I see this much on the same parallel as that. I was also wondering, do you think that when you have this discussion, that you could also? There was the glitch in the beginning that you had made mention of, and I was wondering if you thought, if we had intended to approve this, if you wanted to caveat that that would still, that we would have the ability, it was due upon the approval of, or the fact that GFL didn't have any misgivings with our additional language in here? Can you just validate that that isn't going to end up being a concern?
I wouldn't recommend that you approve, subject to GFL approving. I mean, they can either take it or leave it after you've approved it. If that's how the city were to go. If they don't, then we've given them every opportunity to let us know whether this is acceptable. They haven't sent a representative here, so. I do, I want to look back at my notes and find out if we discussed the relationship, that direct financial relationship, and how the costs of the recycling carts. So it's my understanding that the recycling carts, the 64-gallon, are a new product and service that is not currently made available to the city residents. So I'll go back and figure that out and provide additional information, and we'll bring it back when it's ready.
Well, isn't it also the case if somebody loses or destroys their recycling bin that they're on the dime for the replacement cost?
Lisa, would you have, yeah, okay. Thank you, Lisa. Now, we did have a motion.
I got that motion postponed.
So all in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed? Motion passes. Okay. Old Business Number Three, Ethics Ordinance Amendment, First Reading. Suggested motion is to approve the first reading of the ordinance amending city's ethics ordinance.
Mr. Mayor, I can handle this one as well.
Thanks, Tim.
So this is the draft ethics ordinance prepared by Mr. Muscovitz. Council's seen this draft with the exception of the changes that are made to 276 was the original, relating to political activity. And it looks like that would be 277 as revised. So I, Mr., and I don't want to speak too far out of school, but Mr. Muscovitz appears to, out of his investigation, to have tried to match this up to the statute that was applicable to contracts with public employees. And I also want to remind the council that currently, you have a Board of Ethics under your current ordinance, which is not populated and functioning. That remains in place. There is also a financial disclosure statement requirement that would become effective 20 days after the ordinance becomes effective. The changes that I made with respect to the political activity really divide this into, make divisions, or identify two groups. One is the elected officials, and one are the employees, and the other appointed officials. Elected officials would be responsible for complying with the Michigan Campaign Finance Act, and they are not to solicit employees to participate in campaign functions while the employees are at work, or to use public funds and resources, unless they're available on equal terms to everybody else. The employees, this matches up with an additional statute regarding the political activity of public employees. They're not supposed to be using city time or city resources for any campaign activities. They're free to do that outside on their own personal time. I'm happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Kennedy.
Okay, so, Tim, I sent you an email. I had a question. You know, not being a lawyer, I read it. And it deals with that section on page six, item number one, "City Official. When a matter before the city council involves an entity, property, or issue in which a city official has a financial interest, or if a city official has a financial interest in the outcome of a matter before the council, the official shall disclose the full nature and extent of his or her financial interest on the appropriate record of the city prior to discussion or action thereof." My question to you, just reading that. My question to you, just reading that, is seven people up here, five of whom, I believe, are property owners, would have a financial interest, because it's gonna, whatever they decide is gonna affect their property taxes. Two, I believe, maybe renting property, they would have an indirect interest in it, because it could affect their rent as the person owns the building raises it later. So I was just curious how we actually interpret that operationally up here on the council.
So I began looking into your question, and I did not respond, because I don't have a fully formed answer. But generally, the concept is that if the financial interest would affect all of the council members and all the residents equally, such as a question regarding the millage, that would not present a conflict of interest. The question then becomes, is there anything in this draft language that should be changed or revised to make that clear? And the additional background to that is, under the Home Rule Cities Act, and the Budgeting Act, and your own charter, you're required to adopt a budget, establish a millage, to collect the funds to pay for your budget, and those are things that you're obligated to do. Yet you're also required to be a resident of the community. It doesn't require you to own property, but these are clearly things that are gonna come up. But they apply to everybody and every property owner within the city in the same fashion. So it doesn't appear that that should raise ethics concerns, but the question is, what do we do about the ordinance? And I'd like to take the opportunity, this will be two readings, so I'd like to take the opportunity between the first and second reading to respond to the question and outline some of that information.
Councilmember Kurzweil?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would agree with you, Tim, because that was one of the areas I did do some research on. And I think when they talk about financial interests, they mean a direct financial interest. For example, I'm gonna use Jean Carroll with the DDA. He sits on, that's why I asked about whether or not he has a conflict of interest. Because he sits on the DDA, so he has knowledge of information, he knows where things are going, he has access to information that maybe not all of us have, but yet he potentially could financially benefit from any discussions regarding his plot of land that he owns downtown. I mean, that's where the direct financial interest would come from, because he will benefit from anything that increases his property value, et cetera, et cetera. So I think when I looked into this, because I do a lot of conflict of interest work anyway, is that when it has a broad base, exactly like what you're talking about, that's not what the issue is. The issue is, is when you bring it close to the individual. And also, to disclose their financial interest, if you're an attorney, like myself, and I have a conflict of interest, I can tell you I have a conflict of interest, but to put anything else on the record may actually be a problem for me. Because that's not the public's knowledge as to what my conflict, what the conflict is with my client. My client's information is confidential. All you need to know is that there's a conflict of interest, I remove myself from the conversation, remove myself from the materials, and that's it. But to give the full nature and extent...
If I may, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
I think Councilman Kennedy's question relates to the financial interest...
Right.
...as defined, and whether, and it certainly requires disclosure. The question is, it seems, seems like a step that we shouldn't need to take if it's a tax millage that affects all property in the same manner.
Yeah, that's the broad base.
So, but I do agree that the zoning-type questions, individual property ownership that may be individually affected or affected differently than other properties, certainly raises those ethics concerns. The other question is whether this ordinance would apply, in the specific instance, you're talking about whether this would apply to the DDA as a separate legal entity.
Well, it's affiliated with the city. City sits on the board.
We can talk about that, though.
Yeah.
I've looked at the statute, it's...
How are you defining?
I think it's identified, uh, we should look at the statute.
Yeah.
Nonetheless, you know, council can approve a first reading, or if you'd like for additional information on this particular matter, I don't think there's any urgency.
Okay.
I don't see any reason to prolong this. I mean, this thing really fulfills what we had been looking to accomplish, so I'd make a move, or a motion, that we approve the first reading of the ordinance amending the city's ethics ordinance.
Hold on a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes. Old Business Number 4. Review Proposed Fund Balance Policy. Councilmember Kurzweil?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm the one that put this proposal on the policy, on the agenda, and I thought we would have had our meeting started with respect to the budget. And this is really intended to be something to be discussed at the budget time, so I'd like to postpone this until city council's first budget workshop, whenever that is scheduled. I think that is possibly March 28th for our first budget workshop, and then have Plant Moran go through this, because I think this is something that should be presented through Plant Moran.
Councilmember Kivell?
Well, I'm curious what Plant Moran will offer for our opinion about what these levels should end up being.
I'm not a CPA, and I think it's, I'd like to hear what Plant Moran has to say. There's several categories in here that they're gonna need to discuss. The non-spendable fund balance, the restricted fund. I'd like some professional discussion on this. I'm not a tax attorney, not a CPA person.
Well, I'd prefer having just a general conversation, just to kind of outline some of the parameters that I'm seeing to be sort of pertinent to what those levels are, so. And they aren't predicated on what Plant Moran has to say, it's more conceptual. Well, with that, I'd like to just say that I had called Lisa, and the city of Bridgeman, their template I thought was very compatible with what I was intending to, or hoping to see, and as it turns out, I'm assuming that Lynn is the one that put this together, that is the template that she had chosen as well. The, one of the aspects of this, and it was actually stated in a couple of different communities' policies, that the minimum fund balance would be either the two top taxpayers or a percentage that was designated by the council, whichever is higher. And so I had just kind of reached out to Lisa, and she provided me with information. The two top taxpayers, the aggregate of them is essentially 14% of what our last annual budget expenditures had been. Personally, I think that number ends up needing to be substantially higher than that, because as has been historically practiced in South Lyon, we would routinely have a higher unrestricted fund balance so that we could capitalize on the event of an opportunity for grants being let, that we had match money. And I would like us to continue in that vein. So it's essentially, I mean, we've got Volunteer Park and the amendments to McCady Park, and I can't imagine that there's a department that couldn't find some grant that they would want to make sure that we had the ability to make that match on. So I think trying to establish some of the, whatever the percentage would be that makes us viable to attend to the qualifications of some, especially those larger grants with parklands, I think that's an important aspect that I would like to make sure that is part of our document. The maximum part, I'm not quite as concerned about. I don't want us to end up having, you know, this huge pool of wealth that we're just sitting on. Unfortunately, I'm thinking that we're looking pretty long-term to try to address some of the capital improvement things that we're hoping to accomplish, and, you know, one of the, one of the features that's later on in the agenda is that CIP. So I think we, I would like us to be fully prepared to be able to act in the event that an opportunity came forward, so.
I believe there was a motion on the floor.
Motion on the floor is to...
Postpone?
Mm-hmm. Postpone the discussion of the fund balance policy until the city council's first budget meeting in March. I think that's on March 28th.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Old Business Number 5. Council Meeting Conduct.
Mr. Mayor?
Tim?
I will just introduce this. I provided the agenda note identifying factors that council may want to consider. Council's been provided with a host of sample rules regarding public comments, and there are, some are a little broader, some are a little narrower, and this is really, the agenda note just outlines some concepts that council may want to consider in its discussion tonight.
I'll tell you what, there was a lot here to digest, and I think there's, I think there's certainly some ideas in the surrounding areas that would help us structure these meetings a little bit better. I don't know that we're probably in a place to make any of these decisions tonight. I guess what I'm trying to say is I'd like to see maybe a subcommittee kind of put together the pros and the cons of some of these ideas, and what it would do implementing them here locally. So, I know I can't make a motion, I just wanted you guys to know where I was at with it. Councilmember Priesen?
I just wanted to speak to a couple of different things, because I had originally brought this forward as a two-fold proposal, and this was one part of the proposal. And first of all, I commend you for doing all the work that you did. This is a lot of research. First and foremost, I don't think the subcommittee's a bad idea.
Okay.
I think it is a good idea. I think it always helps to have multiple minds speaking to something and bouncing ideas off each other. The other thing I wanted to mention was, I don't think this is gonna be cut and dry. I think there's gonna be a lot of moving parts to this. For instance, how long does an individual get to speak? What about decorum? Does, do we stop personal attacks? Do we stop, do we look at tone? Are we looking at, because I know for Chelsea, decorum is one of the things that they had, and I thought that was very professional of their community. I like the idea of the mayor being able to waive the two minutes, or three minutes, whatever a council decides upon, and allowing additional time. I think that's, giving the mayor that discretion, especially if it's something informative, that could be helpful. Determining who's gonna keep the time. Some communities have the city clerk that keeps it, and would she be giving notice to the individual speaking, or would she be giving notice to the mayor, and the mayor then telling, hey, time's up, to whomever the resident is? So I think there's a few moving parts here. I, I'm ready to make a decision tonight, but I know there's a lot to digest, so it's really up to council.
Mr. Mayor? Councilmember Kennedy?
Just, you know, just a couple other things that I kind of saw looking through here, and it's been discussed previously, is, you know, we opened up the agenda here for public comments at the outset of the meeting, for topics that are typically not on the agenda. And, you know, what we don't call out for is public comments for the items that are specifically on the agenda. I mean, it becomes sort of a quasi-public hearing, if you will, uncertain items. And do we need to actually define where those take place? And then finally, you know, just as a courtesy to the residents that sit through the sessions here for two, three, or more hours, possibly public comments at the end of the session, so, you know, rather than waiting until, you know, two weeks from now for another public comment section, they can provide comments at the close of the meeting as well. So, again, I think it's a couple things that's worth looking at, that, you know, I think would be better addressed with a development of a straw man, if you will, in a, in a subcommittee. Bring it back, and then let everybody take a look at it and see where they stand on it.
I'm sorry, what was that last part of that?
Straw man?
In a committee.
Subcommittee.
Oh, a subcommittee coming back?
Subcommittee, just to draw basically a straw man of what it would look like, and then we can, you know, talk about it.
Councilmember Richards?
One thing that struck me as absent in this, say, for instance, a councilman wants to exercise his three minutes to speak, if that's what we agreed on. But rather than do that, he says, "I'll pass my three minutes to the next person, and let them then have the floor, okay?" I would, I would think that would be an admissible thing for each of us to do, and not out of order, but I don't see anything like that in any of these pages that I read.
Mr. Mayor, point of order.
Yeah.
Anyway, this, that's all I gotta say.
Councilmember Kurzweil?
I think this in Robert's Rules, and I think it's prohibited to pass your time on. The reason for, I can find the section and get it to you, is that you don't want any one particular person monopolizing the time with a particular point of view. The point of Robert's Rules is to provide both the majority and the minority an opportunity to speak. So generally, under Robert's Rules, that would not be permitted.
Mr. Mayor? Councilmember Kennedy?
Just as a point of information, we're not discussing the council time limits for the council table. We're discussing time limits for the public discussion.
Correct.
It has nothing to do with the members of the council.
I was responding to his question as a point of information.
I understand that, and he misinterpreted what was being said. So I'm trimped to provide clarification.
Yeah, and I clarified it. Thank you.
Councilmember Kivell?
One of the things that I found kind of interesting, Albion's public comment, was their first, the opening of the meeting, they have a public comment that is specific to agenda items. And I can certainly see that becoming, has the potential for being a pretty contentious moment there. But at the same time, we've got people that live in this community that don't have any official way to weigh in. I mean, you could contact individuals and things to make your point, but the idea of speaking to the public at the public meeting, I always thought was kind of an interesting idea. I would like to have that something that is considered, and we could always, in the event that things just go haywire, we could always modify the rules again. But I like the idea of people having the ability to weigh in on things that are going to be part of their lives, so. And their second, they're at the end of the meeting, was for non-agenda items, so apparently there's a penalty for not speaking to what was on the meeting.
Councilmember Priesen?
So I guess at this point, if we are gonna do a subcommittee, are we looking to have three people on the committee, or four? How are we looking to format this, to move forward? And I would personally like to see this in effect sooner rather than later. So if we commit, if we have a subcommittee and we at least give some direction to our city attorney as to how we would like to see this formatted, we would still have to draft the ordinance, which is gonna take some time. So the process is still gonna be a little bit, in order for it to go into effect. But I think it's important to get on this sooner rather than later, because it's unfortunate that residents have to sit through a two, three, four-hour meeting, and then they don't get the opportunity at the end to say something. And I think that's important. You should be able to speak your mind, or if something needs to be added to the agenda, give your two cents. Tim, do you have any feedback?
Well, I guess the first question was, who among the council members would like to be involved, if any of you?
I would like to, simply because I brought the proposal.
I understand that Mary Priesian brought the proposal.
I'm sorry, Ms. Colosi.
No, this is inappropriate.
We had a lengthy public comment earlier. I'm sure you have something to say, but I'm gonna ask you to please step away from the microphone. We do not accept public comment after the public comment session.
Pardon?
Yes. That's correct.
Well, then, how did Ryan Cottingham talk on the...
That's because you directed him to, because it was gonna be further on the agenda. This is not something that she's speaking to.
The public's always been able to comment on an agenda.
Maggie, we're working on structuring these meetings.
Pardon?
Folks, we are working here to provide a structure... Folks, we are working here to provide a structure of a meeting, and I sympathize with the anger and frustration on people's behalf that may want to speak, but the fact of the matter is, we are sticking to the rules of the meeting tonight. Now, in the past, there has been public comment, whether it's since I've been in office, or going back to other mayors, and it's something that we're not going to do anymore, just like we, I was not going to allow anyone to respond to the public comments earlier either, because the council has a time to speak at the end. So, if this is something that we want to put in to the stuff we're discussing about public comments, and people being able to come up to the microphone during that, that can be discussed in the subcommittee of what we're doing. But as of tonight, and going forward until there's something changed, public comment will be held in the public comment, council comments will be held in the council comments, and that's it.
So you only want it discussed in the subcommittee behind closed doors, like when Mary went to the police station and filed her clemish report on only me-
Ms. Klosi.
-and pulled my criminal background check, of which I have no criminal history, but they gave her all of that.
I'm going to ask you one more time to sit down before I ask you to leave this meeting. Maggie?
Absolutely.
Have you, have you been recognized on the floor?
Dan, please control your temper. Mike Kramer had that problem.
Well...
Please control your temper.
And I am.
I'm not going to put up with it next time.
Ms. Klosi, I'm asking you to please refrain from your public comment at this time, thank you. Back to the meeting.
So as I was saying, I brought this proposal forward, I feel as though I would like to be on the committee, um, and just add whatever insight I have to it. Thank you.
Councilmember Kittle?
Say there's, okay, so the, the subcommittee comes up with their recommendations, in the event that, so we'll, we'll bring those back and then kick them around again, so essentially the full body is going to be-
Yes.
-coming to a conclusion, I'm just not-
Nothing will be done behind closed doors.
Right.
This is, this is more or less to bang some ideas around, to come back and then offer to Mr. Wilhelm to try and structure these meetings better. Yes, correct.
I'm just not, personally, I'd, I'd like to take the middleman out and just have us have a discussion and come to some kind of occlusion, conclusion as a body. I, I'm not seeing where the real value added is by the subcommittee, so-
And that's perfectly fine, I just felt-
Especially since these documents don't end up having such a broad swing of things. Ann Arbor is an animal unto itself, I mean, they have so much activity that they are very regimented, but most of them are much more like what we are accustomed to, and I don't think that it's starting over.
My concern, Glenn, and everyone, was, there's a lot in here, and I think there's some, some things that would be great to add to our community out here, to help us be more efficient in these meetings, and I think there's some that really just don't, just don't really need to be in play here. So I was just offering up the idea of a subcommittee to throw all the ideas out there and us not have to do it in an open meeting, that's going to keep us here till midnight anyways. I'm open for whatever, it was just an idea, is all I'll say.
Well, if I could make a suggestion, how about we just postpone this to the next meeting? Everybody digest this and come up with their little bullet points of things that they think are either non-starters, or things that would be pertinent to what we, we need to approach.
Is that...
I mean, does anyone have any misgiving with that?
That's fine.
I mean, you hear that people in the audience are laughing when you say postpone it again. Like, I see people nodding when they're laughing, you're laughing to postpone it again.
Ms. Klosi, I'm asking-
I know you guys want to get past the news cycle, but you're not going to.
I'm not going to address you again. Please, return to your seat, so we can construct this meeting. Thank you. Do we have a motion on the floor to postpone this?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we postpone this to the next meeting, the first meeting in March.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Aye.
Was that a four?
It was on four.
Okay. All opposed? Motion passes. Onto new business, number one. Resignations, Frank Fogarty from Zoning Board of Appeals, and Cheryl Wickham from the DDA Board. Recommendation is to accept the resignations with thanks. Anyone have anything? Councilmember Kurzweil?
Thank you, I move to accept the resignation of Frank Fogarty from the Zoning Board of Appeals, and Cheryl Wickham from the DDA Board of Directors, and offer the thanks for their service.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. New business number two, reappointments of board and commission members. First up... Councilmember Kurzweil?
Thank you, I move to affirm the appointments made by Mayor Chel, Belchad of the following individuals, Frank Fogarty, Board of Review, his term expires in three years and is stated in the agenda note, Jason Rose, Planning Commission, Scott Langham, Planning Commission, Wayne Chubb, Planning Commission, Josie Kearns, Culture Arts Commission, Ron Morelli, Zoning Board of Appeals, Rose Peruski, Parks and Recreation, Erica Wilson, Parks and Recreation, Norm Summers, Historical Commission, and request that the city clerk attach the agenda note with their names and their terms included into the minutes.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, I want to speak, thank you, Rose. Okay, the motion's been seconded.
Yep.
I've been asked to speak, to speak to the Norm Summers appointment. Norm Summers has moved out of the community, and he's the last of the original commissioners to, uh, be on the actual historical commission. We have replaced him with Jim Race, okay, he's taken his seat, okay, and been approved, okay? We also have Gary Wickersham, and another person on there as, on a, with three new historical, oh, Bob Martin, three new historical commissioners, okay? Uh, so it's an error, okay, somehow to have put Norm Summers on here, so I wish we'd approve all the rest, but just delete Norm Summers from, from this.
Okay, the motion is amended to delete Norm Summers' appointment to the Historical Commission. Second on the amendment.
I'll second that.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. So that puts us up to approve appointments to the DDA Board.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Kurzweil?
Thank you, I move to appoint Mark Childs to the DDA Board of Directors, and to reappoint Jean Carroll, Marshall Callis, all for four-year terms expiring March 2022.
I second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Abstain.
Thank you, Mr. Richards. Motion passes.
Did you say abstain?
Yes, he did.
Yeah, personal conflict of interest.
Where?
Four-year term for Jean Carroll, and Marcia Claus, I don't know her, but Mr. Carroll owns the building where the bakery is, and the old grinds, you know.
Yeah, and?
And, okay, that's sort of my campaign headquarters, okay, politically, plus I worked for Mr. Carroll, okay, and, and he has paid me for services there at his property from time to time, from the course of the year.
Well, that's different than simply hanging out there.
And I don't feel it's appropriate for me to vote on it, so I render an abstention on that. Mr. Mayor, you agree?
Yep, that's fine, Carl. Let's see here, where we're at on this. So that was the DDA.
Don't we need the vote, then?
Yep, so we're moving to number four, new business, zoning ordinance amendment to reduce the number of members, first reading.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Wilhelm?
You've been provided an agenda note, this is the amendment to ordinance, section 10281B, to reduce the membership of the ZBA from seven to five, as authorized under the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act. There's one other clarification and change, so one member of the ZBA may also be a member of the Planning Commission. The city of South Lyon has, has done that for a number of years, in previous statutory schemes, it was a requirement, and that has been relaxed to make it permissive rather than mandatory. So that would, that would match, that change matches up with statutory authority as well.
Well, the recommendation is to approve the first reading of the ordinance.
I make the, or I make the motion that we approve the first reading of the ordinance amendment.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. New business item number five, National Main Street Conference in Kansas City, Missouri, March 25th through the 28th, attendance approval for economic developer and DDA director. Recommendation is to approve this.
I'll make the motion to approve attendance and travel in the amount of $1,800 to the National Main Streets Conference in Kansas City, March 25th through the 28th, 2018, for the economic development and DDA director.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. New business number six, capital improvement plan.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Councilmember Friesen?
All right, so I am briefly going to speak to this, because there is someone in the room, actually, a couple of people in the room who are much more knowledgeable to this than I am, but essentially, the capital improvements plan is something that I have been working on with, along with Bob Donahue, for the past couple of months now, and we have met with Planning Commission, Parks and Rec, I know Bob has met with the DDA, and this is something that essentially is for the city to budget long-term. It's a long-term budget plan that would be, instead of two years, five to 10 years, and it would be specifically for infrastructure. One of the major issues that the city of South Lyon has, and one of the biggest complaints that our constituents often have, is our roads, our streets. Our streets are terrible, and we need to put money toward them, and a lot of times that can be quite costly. So, this plan, this capital improvement plan, would be going toward our infrastructure, which would include roads, but if we were ever to do a police and fire complex, which is something that could be 10 years from now, 20 years from now, never, what, we don't know, but if we were to do something like that, those funds would come from this budget, the capital improvement plan. Further, attached to this agenda is an example of Dexter, and also Farmington, Farmington Hills, the links are attached, so those are communities that have an excellent plan set up in place already, and they're quite successful. Many major communities that are successful right now and thriving have a capital improvements plan, so this is just something that South Lyon, I think, is a little behind in the sense that we need to be thinking long-term, not just two years in the making. So, with that, I'm actually going to turn it over to Bob, and he's the plethora of knowledge when it comes to this, this is his baby.
I, I don't have a lot to add, but I, I will. Um, I think it's important from an economic development standpoint, a big question that we have from anyone investing, often it goes to the roads. I know that we had some real estate professionals in the room, and legal opinion that, their opinion, which infuriated me, that this town was not a good location, when in fact, it is a very good location, and the businesses that are expanding, are expanding, and they do ask, what's the condition of the roads, what's the condition of the water and sewer, the infrastructure? So, this really is an economic development tool, as well as a, a long-range forecast for the budget. I know all the departments do a two-year forecast for the two-year budget, but I think it really helps council, in all the departments, certainly the city administration, because if an issue comes up like MERS, where are we on the priority list with the infrastructure investments? Where are we on the long-range priority list on facilities? So I think it's a better, long-term picture for you to do your jobs better with the budget. And so, it's, it's kind of a no-brainer, um, I think there's a little bit of extra time involved by department heads, to, you know, forecast out five-year-plus, and I think that, I'm going to differ with, some of the information from the Michigan Association of Planning seems to think that they should take the lead. I don't agree with that, I think it's a partnership, and I think the Planning Commission should be involved, because it is noted under state planning law, but the city appoints the Planning Commission, the administrative and fiduciary function is with the city. So these communities that Mary just mentioned, and many others, it's a partnership, and the city takes the lead in partnership with the Planning Commission. And so I think it's a perfect opportunity for this community to, to have a better picture, to make long-range decisions.
Councilmember Kurzweil?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, just to give a little bit of history on this, the first person that I know of in the city that talked about a capital improvement plan, or asset replacement, some of it's asset replacement, capital improvement includes other things other than that, was Jeff Potter. I think Jeff Potter was probably one of the best visionaries the city ever had, probably the best mayor we ever had. And then John Doyle came along, and he was also interested in doing long-term planning. There was resistance in the city, and I don't think it's difficult to figure out who those individuals were. So you went through this period of time where the city just sort of struggled, paid its bills, you know, we did a budget, blah, blah, blah. But actual capital improvement planning has been a concept that I think several mayors in the past have really, really tried to get the city on to doing some prudent, you know, future planning, and you wonder if people had listened to Jeff Potter, if they had listened to John Doyle, you wonder where the city would be today with some long-term planning. So here we are again, recycling the old pennies, I hate to say it, but, you know, we're just recycling a concept, although this time I hope that the concept takes. I know that I have a stack of these capital improvement plans, you know, myself, in terms of doing it, that's why you have a two-year plan, three-year plan, five-year plan, is because you incorporate in your budgeting plan some of your capital improvement plan. In fact, some, a capital improvement plan is, my understanding is, as it was explained to me by planners, is, it's really, this is what you pass out to the taxpayers, because you're looking for a mill. So your capital improvement plan is really your marketing brochure that you send out to citizens in order to get them on board to approve your mill. So, good luck, I mean, I, I'll support it 100%, but there's been resistance in the past by two very, very good, outstanding mayors that tried to get planning through, and so I hope, I hope this time it goes through.
I, I think it's a good way to, and I agree, I, I think it's a good way to realize our master plan, because it, it includes park facilities and infrastructure that'll let us better realize our master plan, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Kennedy?
Just, just as an add-on to that, I mean, we've, we've talked about the, the need for infrastructure, and I've talked about this previously, it's, it goes beyond just that that you can see out there in the community, the roads and so forth. This looks at the, you know, the asset replacement plan that we've talked about in the Water and Wastewater Department, in the DPW, and the rest, but the things that work behind the scenes that the residents only become aware of when they fail to work. So it looks at, you know, what's actually involved in evaluating the condition of all of that equipment and the infrastructure, to evaluate when it's exceeded its life, and when it needs to be replaced so that you can budget for that. As part of that process, I've talked about some tools that are available to objectively determine what your true, true needs are, separating them from your wants, and what they refer to in this plan is things like a risk assessment. And what I did earlier today is I passed out copies of risk assessments that I've used in various, in various companies within industry. This is standard practice with industry, okay, I'm surprised it doesn't take place, and maybe for the reasons that Councilmember Kurzweil highlighted, it's just met with some resistance in the past, but this truly needs to be in place if we're going to ever be successful at budgeting more than just two years out. I mean, you, you need to be looking at what your obligations are going to be farther into the future if you're going to be successful at it. And again, you, you know, so we've, I've talked with, you know, Mike, the new DPW superintendent and wastewater superintendent, about this, and I've talked to his supervisors over there in the plants about this as well. To do this and do this effectively, I'm going to take a little exception with what you said, Bob, it's a, it's a laborious effort, okay? It's a lot of pick and shovel work, but it's well worth it. Once you have it, then all you need to do is update it, and the goal would be to, if you're going to actually do this, to pull the trigger, and let's move forward so that we actually have this at the start of the budgeting year for next year. You know, so you've got basically at this point, you know, eight, nine, 10 months, whatever it is, you've got a lot of ground to cover. it is, you've got a lot of ground to cover, and let's get the information there so we can determine, you know, how much of it can be contained within our existing budget, how much might be, you know, subject to increased dedicated millage, on whatever it happens to be, based on the priority of those particular items that need to be addressed. So I'm glad somebody brought this forward.
The wastewater plant has already been implementing this. We have what's called an asset management plan. And in that, we are required to put a, a plan of action together like that that shows criticality of, of each piece of equipment, when it needs to be replaced. And Bob and, and the staff there have put five-year budgets together for all three departments, which I think you guys have seen in the budgets before. And we just want to expound on those now to include, you know, as much as we can moving forward. I know he's already put a million-dollar budget together for one of the wells to be replaced and to use drinking water revolving fund money for that, so. And then I'll be meeting with the engineers so that we can get that plan in action. So just letting you know that some of this has already taken place in different departments, so.
Councilmember Kurzweil?
No, I, I've already spoken to somebody else.
I'd like to speak.
First off, I wanted to ask, or mention the fact that I thought it was kind of odd that this was a statute that enabled planning to be the lead on this. I'm, that just, I mean, they're not the ones that approved. That's an interpretation by the Michigan Society of Planning. I think the Michigan Municipal League would agree that it's a partnership. Probably blinders on there. So, and I, I think that they're, they're critical to the process, but I, I think as some of the literature that we were provided, you know, our master plan, our park plan, every plan that we've got needs to be incorporated into this thing and then vetted to determine what the pecking order of each of these categories should end up being. One, one of the things that I thought was interesting was that part of the, part of the literature spoke to the idea that this shouldn't actually, this should be pretty much individual items, not reoccurring items, which I thought made good sense. And then there was, I had seen some examples where they still had, like Farmington still had some relatively small amount of money, but budgeted for roads, where I was thinking that it seems to me that a dedicated road millage seems more pertinent to what our real needs are. We, when you saw HRC in here and they were speaking to the idea that we would, if we had, the Act 51 money plus $900,000 a year keeps us where we're at. We don't degrade any further. Well, that's a long ways from, I think, everybody's expectations. So we're not going to end up getting that kind of money from a CIP. I mean, that would end up taking every dollar that we had created. The idea is that it allows you to look at different financial options as you plan. Yeah, look at maybe new tools with existing tools. So it is more organizational than the actual pot of money? Yeah, okay, that makes sense.
Councilmember Kurzweil?
Mike, the, the, the plan that's in place over in the Water Department, it, I could be wrong, but my understanding is that's mandated by the state.
It is mandated by the state for the wastewater plant only.
Yeah.
And it's in our permit now, so they, if you're not taking action on it, they can take action on you for not following through.
Yeah, and, and I think that's a real critical point to bring up, because I believe that has been in place for at least a decade or for a very, very long time.
Most of the plants are just now getting into it. I think the last permit cycle is when they, when some of them went into effect.
But the statutes requiring it have been in place for a while, like 10 years, 15 years, or whatever.
And it's getting to the inflammation, implementation stage.
Yeah, and, and I can recall, I believe it may have been Mayor Doyle, that was attempting to extend the statutory requirement for sewer and water into the overall planning for the city, and that's where he was meeting his resistance, I think. And I think that it's very important to note that you are mandated by the state to do the planning. The problem is, is dealing with everybody else in the city who doesn't see the need, who doesn't have the desire, who doesn't have the skillset to even engage in a, in a five, six, seven-year plan. So that's where I think the resistance, as I recall those discussions, John was a very, and so the same thing with Jeff Potter, very brilliant men, great visionaries. But, but the problem was, is unless the state comes in and tells the city what to do, it doesn't get done. And you can see what happens. So I wanted to make that clear, that you're in place because the state's mandating it, not because you've had brilliant leadership over there over the years. The state came in and told you, this is what you have to do. Well, the rest of us should be doing it too, so, whatever.
Councilmember Richards?
Thank you, Maggie. Bob, I'd like to say something quick here. After we talked Friday about this topic briefly at the counter, I, I read my package, got into the fine print of this particular part of the whole deal, and it is quite thick. But there's one problem, okay? It puts a tremendous amount of pressure on the Planning Commission to make this whole thing work, because it requires the chairman and another alternate to work closely together with hours and hours of time, and I don't think they, they got that kind of time available, okay? Plus, every department head's got to kick in on this, okay? With the difficulties that Dan and I had trying to get things organized with the Cable Commission, getting people to put in a report on something, I got my doubts that it was a smooth ride to get, to implement this. Is it possible, in your opinion, if we could review, if we implement it, we could review it in six months and then review it again in a year, to see if it's, if our, the whole thing is working?
As Councilman Kennedy said, this is intended to be, not for this year's budget, because this is a sizable undertaking. I agree. I think, I think with the leadership of our current interim city manager, or someone with progressive leadership of a city manager, that this community should have, that we would instruct the department heads to do this. It's, it's within their skillsets to all do it, and I don't think there's a problem. We specifically met with the Planning Commission Chair, who's very much in favor of this.
Roxanne Ruckles, too.
So Scott Lanham was excited about it and thinks it's the way to go, and echoed many of these comments.
Okay, if he feels he's got enough time, it'd far be it for me to second-guess him, but I just, the way this is structured out, okay, it puts an awful lot of pressure on the Planning Commission to make it work.
Typically, the, the city's planner, you have a consulting planner as the facilitator. So the person that will actually be the, the glue to pull this together would be the city's planner. Although it's a partnership, the city is in control with the Planning Commission's assistance. That's the way I see it.
Councilmember Parisian?
I know we had also discussed, Bob and I, just different options and ways to move this forward. And one way that it would, if it was to be moved forward, we would implement a committee that would have a representative from Parks, from Rec, from, from Parks and Rec, from Planning, from DDA, city manager, a council member. We would have a lot of different representatives who could speak to priorities, ideas, and there was, there would be a list that would set forth the priorities of what comes first. Maybe it's roads, maybe it's something else, whatever the infrastructure is in our city that needs to be attended to. So this would be a collaborative effort on everyone's part. The other thing I wanted to mention, too, is, it was actually thanks to Stephen, he's been sending out the SEMCOG emails, letting us know what's going on, what the updates are with the, with municipalities and with the state. And one of them in particular was a training, a specific training for capital improvements on March 15th, and it's from 8:00 to 11:00 a.m. regarding just this alone. And it's a raw, basics, fundamentals, this is what capital improvements training is, this is how it gets started, how it's implemented, and all of the benefits that come with it. So I know there's a $25 fee attached to it, but I'm not sure, is that reimbursable, Chief? Is that the city is going to pay that off or pay for that?
The city would have training funds available to pay for whoever would attend that.
Then in that case, I would highly encourage any council members or any other individuals within the city to take advantage of that, because it's, it is a large undertaking, but the more you understand it, the more you know it, I think, the more attainable it is. Thank you.
Thanks, Bob.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
New business number seven. Memorial plaque for Wilbur Beckstein.
Are we making a motion on this?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Or we got something else?
Do we have a motion on the SIP?
I'll make the motion to support it.
Sorry.
Or I'll make the motion to move forward with at least implementing it, not for this year, but maybe create a committee and move forward with it for next year's fiscal year.
I'll support that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. New business number seven. Memorial plaque for Wilbur Beckstein. I'm going to hand this one off to you, Carl.
Mr. Mayor, do I have your permission to go up to the microphone? I'd rather speak at the microphone about this rather than sit at my desk.
That's perfectly fine.
I'm going to try to run all three of these. Ryan, could you come down here and help me, assist me a little bit with this? Okay. Yeah. Okay, people, I'm going to try to hold it to 18 minutes. My purpose and intention is to bring up a discussion topic and not an action vote, okay? I wish to alert you, and something has been talked about for some time, a memorial plaque for a man that no, but most of you have never heard of, his name's Wilbur Beckstein. He has a son named Eddie, who has worked with Dan and Ted Wallace in the SLCTV for many years. Wilbur Beckstein did the, the community a tremendous service back in, I would think it would have been 1954, 55, okay? He organized something called Little League, okay? And I believe you had to be eight years old to participate. I think, as I recall, I had to wait a year before I could be on it, okay? Back then, that's how the, the rules were. But Mr. Beckstein was dedicated to children. He did not die in a tragic circumstances, but he lived a memorable life, an enigmatic and an iconic person in the community. He was also a World War II veteran, went in the third day in Normandy Beach and stayed the rest of the war in European theater. He worked in a tube mill in my father's department, one of my father's many machinists. And he raised three kids. All of his children still survive, as I recall, but they don't all live right here, but they're around. And I told him if I ever made it to city council somewhere along the line, I was going to propose that we have a, a memorial plaque or something for their father. Because I had mentioned it to the, the committee that has selected the Sports Hall of Fame years ago for the South Lyon High School, and they said he should have one, but it shouldn't, it can't come from us. He doesn't qualify. He's got to be something from the city. And I don't think Mr. Beckstein's family would necessarily want anything as, excuse me, as elaborate as a ball diamond dedicated to him. Maybe just a plaque on a stand near his gravestone in the cemetery, something simple. But what I'd like council to look at and agree to do is, is review this at a later date, maybe a month or two months down the road, after we can, as Glenn said, supporting documents, okay, for the whole play, thing. Mr. Beckstein was in the newspapers greatly 50 years ago, and his three teams that he started in, in the youth league was junior, let's see, yeah, starters, juniors, and seniors, okay, that's what I think, I think it was, okay? And then he had adult teams. Now, there were, over the years, there were other baseball teams in the community, Kiwanis, J.C.'s, all the churches had one. I played on one of them. Sorry, I wasn't good enough to be on a Wilbur Beckstein team, though, in the adult league. But he also founded a tube mill team, and they had a semi-professional status, and they went all over, and they recruited baseball players for that team, okay? And they had a tremendous record. Anyway, Mr. Beckstein did all this with his own money, his own dedication. He raked the fields with his own tractor, with the York rake, bought the bases and the, the bats and equipment, okay, to get things started. And from that humble beginning, everything grew into what we have today for the recreation facilities that we have today, okay? And nobody probably remembers his name, but I do, and I'm just letting you know that I would like to propose that we look at a plaque for him, okay, memorial nature. Anyway, that's all I have to say on that topic.
Councilmember Kittle?
I'd love to make a suggestion that this be forwarded to plan, or the Parks and Rec Commission, they can run it through their policy for dedications, just like everything else that takes place in the parks should, should undergo.
Good ideas, probably a good idea. My only thought was, I don't think he'd want something in the park, but I don't know that. I can't speak for his family or descendants. I just thought something in the.
Well, it was a recreation-driven thing. Why, and where would you anticipate the, a plaque would be?
I just don't think he would be comfortable with that much notoriety up to his descendants. It would be up to his descendants, wouldn't it, Glenn, ultimately?
Well, I mean, if it's going to go in the park, it would be up to parks.
Okay, sure, understood.
Councilmember Parisian?
Okay, my next.
Hang on. Councilmember Richards? Councilmember Parisian?
Councilmember Richards, I just want to clarify. So did you want the city to pay for this plaque? Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, city paid for the plaque.
So pursuant to the Michigan Constitution that we have from 1963, we can't use public funds for a private purpose.
Well, then we, then, I'm sure some people would be more than glad to come up with a couple hundred bucks, okay, or whatever it would take.
That's different, yeah.
You know, for, for a plaque, a memorial plaque. There's a, essence of memorial plaque in the police station that gives memorial to the councilman and the, and the mayor and the staff at that time in 1978, '79, for, for putting a roof on the building.
Yeah, I think it's, it's doable. I think it just might be something that we need to maybe raise funds for from donations, perhaps?
Very well, but, no, very well.
Councilmember Kurzweil, you have something?
Yeah, please.
Yes, I do have something. Jim, could you look into that, please? Because public funds were used for the memorial for Paul Baker Park.
It's Article Nine, if you need some clarification.
So we use public funds to memorialize that. Public funds were used to memorialize the gentleman who passed away down in whatever, wherever Ted Wallace is. DPW paid for that. That came out of public funds.
Michigan Constitution, Article Nine.
All right.
Thanks, Tim.
All good ideas.
Yeah. Yeah.
Next item.
So we'll move forward to number eight, then, our new business, Carl?
Yeah.
Okay, and that is the Cemetery Commission.
It's my concept that the time is right and long overdue for us to form a Cemetery Commission. I think it would fit well with the community, and as long as we don't, that commission doesn't have anything to do with pricing or sales or services or fees for burials and the grave monuments in the city, okay, in our cemetery. We only got one cemetery. As long as it's separate from that, and I believe it would be an attractive thing to, to bring people into the community that, that might feel disgruntled or disenfranchised at this time, and they could have something new to work with, okay? And a Cemetery Commission, especially if they have any relatives that are buried there, would fit their psychological ambience, okay, so it would seem to me. And they'd be willing to participate, but I'd have to help line it up the first year, but I would seriously phase out of it, okay? Because you can't be on a commission and be on city council, okay? I would, I would like us to review this. Well, there's a lot more things that I could add to this. But basically, my concept of the commission is that if I'm reading one of these documents that, uh, I got directly from Chief Collins, if I'm reading and interpreting it correctly last week, a cemetery commission, as long as it doesn't handle the money, can be eligible for a federal grant or some grant monies which are sorely needed, okay, for different parts of the city. It's, uh, because we are under twelve thousand in population, we fall in the guidelines of potential, uh, award money for a separate, uh, entity, and we have, we've never had any in our, in our cemetery. And I'll tell you this, Lynn Ladner did a beautiful job last year on short notice of putting together, uh, a pricing, uh, thing for the, our cemetery compared to other cemeteries. I'd done some work prior to that for the last two years, for a prior two years, and she came up with as much or more than I had, and she did a beautiful job on it, okay? Um, and I believe we raised the prices of our lots and burial plots. But this commission would have nothing to do with anything of that nature. Uh, yeah, it would have to be set up that way, and it'd have their own, no budget to start with. Everybody brings in their own money for whatever their costs are in the areas of, that they choose to work on, with more than what this, what's on this page. Uh, anyway, I think it's a, a very wonderful thing and long overdue. If we can get some grant money, the main thing would be fix the street, fix the road in the cemetery, you know?
Senator?
Previous DPW director, Bob Martin, estimated it would cost a hundred thousand dollars. I don't, I don't agree with that, but just the same.
Councilmember Kennedy?
Okay, uh, Councilmember Richards, as, as part of the, you know, what it says here, we're gonna review in a month, decide what we do going forward. Um, and then Councilmember Kivell suggested we do a little bit of more homework to get some more information. So, as part of that, that homework, if you will, a couple of things that, that stand out. You're looking to have a ten-to-twelve member board. Uh, I'm just curious if you've canvassed anybody to see if there's any interest in actually populating that board, because we do have trouble getting people to populate the existing boards and commissions in some cases. Secondly, secondly, you look at, we're gonna go and pull broken stones out of the, that have been vandalized, put out into the field and so forth. Seriously, I think if we're aware of that, the DPW has the responsibility for maintaining the cemetery, and I don't see why they wouldn't be instructed to, uh, to perform that type of activity.
I don't either, but I approached Steve Renwick years ago when I've done work on this.
Yeah, I'm, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Okay, but with all due respect, Mr. Renwick is, is no longer here. We have a new superintendent of DPW, and as part of your, your due diligence to do the background investigation, I would suggest perhaps you have those types of discussions with him to really understand the feasibility of this commission and what it's truly going to address. You know, it sounds all well-intentioned, but, you know, I don't know what it's actually going to accomplish, all right? And maybe you've got a clearer idea. You know, it's a little foggy to me. I just need a few more, a few more details.
Well, it's quite clear to me.
Councilmember Kurtswell?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I know there's been discussion of this. Uh, thank you for bringing this to council's attention. Um, I can understand where, um, Councilperson Kennedy would want you to sit down with Mike and maybe go over some of these things, but some of these things, I think, rather than a commission, I don't know why you just don't form a little subcommittee and maybe have three people, or maybe you sit on the subcommittee. It's not unusual for council members to sit on a subcommittee, and, and the three of you find the three individuals who are interested and work through these issues. Like, I don't know if this is DPW's responsibility to locate vandalized graves that have been dragged into the woods. Um, I don't think it's DPW's responsibility to under, identify the, the members of broken gravestones in the old part or to locate, um, unmarked graves. I think their responsibility is for maintenance, so maybe, uh, you and Mike can put together a little plan where, you know, DPW handles some of the maintenance issues and some of the issues that, um, are not necessarily, uh, I would consider a DPW thing, such as, um, looking at the location of abandoned grave plots. I mean, that would be something I think your subcommittee could do.
Yeah.
I, I will tell you, I've heard a lot of complaints that our cemetery is, is so antiquated and, um, it's not maintained well in terms of information. I hear more about the information side, people that wanna research family plots and things like that, and, uh, they have noticed a lot of headstones in the, in the cemetery that are in poor condition, so.
Just for a, uh, point of interest, uh, for the ancestors that I've got that are up there, none of which I ever do, I've got sixteen places, I could, burial plots I could be buried in. If I so choose, I've got sixteen empty spots, and my ancestors, uh, deeded lots, okay? But I don't plan to, I plan to be buried with my parents, supposedly. But I'm just laying, you know, not for instance, okay? That's just an example, okay? When the family dies out, other people move away, okay? And they, they don't, they never get buried back there with a plot, a plot that grandfather paid for six kids or something of that nature, you know? And that's, that's where you get the leftover abandoned plots that are over a hundred years old.
Councilmember Kivell?
Anyway, uh, yeah. I had it in there, I believe, that states, uh, persons outside the city limits that have a legacy would probably enjoy being in part of something new in the city that, uh, they could feel a sense of pride that they're doing something, you know? That's my concept of it. Maybe I'm, maybe I'm wrong, okay? But anyway, I'm just asking you to consider it, council. And, Mr. Mayor, it's up to you.
Carl, could I ask, uh, first off, the, I would love for you to have a conversation with, uh, with Mr. Bovin, see if there's some, some way you could work out some of the mechanics that you think are important things to be attended to that you, I, I don't know how these, this group would end up being any different than the cities actually managing that, but nonetheless, maybe you guys could find some common ground and, and move forward with that. Uh, you, you had made the suggestion that they wouldn't actually have anything to do with the budget and handling money or any of that kind of thing. A- as soon as they start trying to determine the tasks that would be conducted, they're involved in spending city money and resources on activities, so that is part of the budget, so.
The first year, I'm just stating there'd be no budget the first year. There might be subsequent years.
But we're not going to let the cemetery go to seed in the, the event that they don't have a budget. I mean, their, DPW is still going to have oversight on the maintenance and everything.
We have a perpetual care fund up there for, for, that was seven hundred thousand dollars sitting in it, okay? Which it was drained down to about two ninety, but it's a lot of time, but it's back up there now.
But there's caveats on what that can be spent on and everything, so why don't you end up entertaining the idea of this being an advisory kind of a little board? Have, have people gather together, they could make recommendations to, to Mike, perhaps, and, um, you know, you guys could have, put you in another meeting, Mike, you know?
Maybe, there's a possibility, but my concept was that this commission would not be an advisory board to the city manager, but would have its own autonomy or a degree of autonomy and report to council. And, uh, the city manager itself could be ex officio on the board, okay? But not control the board like, uh, with the situation with Parks and Recs, where they have a lot of money and they can't do anything with it.
Well, what would be accomplished as a product of that?
Okay, in my concept, the commission will be able to form Cottage Industries up there in some respect, okay? And be able to generate its own money. Uh, it's not gonna be talked about, you know? But anyway, Glenn, that's, that's what my concept was for, for that. No, no city money involvement the first year, but it might be the second. Anyway, Mr. Mayor, how do you feel? Do you, do we put this down for another meeting?
I can't make a motion on it.
I can't, I don't, I don't, but I'll make a motion, but I don't think I can make a motion up here.
I'll make the motion to propose it to another time. How about the first meeting in, um, April?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
No.
Could we do a roll call? All in favor? Or Lisa, I'm sorry.
Lisa.
Just a point of information.
Uh, no, thank you.
Can I ask up?
Time out. Councilmember Kennedy?
I mean, the, the real, the real thrust of this, Councilmember Richards, is whether that's adequate time for you to get the information that's being requested based on the discussions here, and also to explore the possibilities that have been raised, uh, along the lines with, uh, Councilmember Kurtswell's recommendation. This could be a small work group, sub-project, whatever. This could be similar in nature, perhaps, to the, the cleaning of the, the Yerkes Drain type thing, okay? It could be an Eagle Scout project, could be a variety of things that could be investigated. So, the question is, and I'm not, I'm not telling you to do one way or another, I'm just throwing out some suggestions. Does that give you adequate enough time to get the, the level of detail that's required to bring this back for that type of discussion? That's, that's my only question.
Talking about the first of April?
Right.
Yeah.
Probably not. I'd probably need a little longer than that, okay?
How much longer, how much longer? I'm, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Well, uh, it's up to you, Mr. Mayor. What do you?
Well, no, we would have to ask, Rose, did you make the motion? We'd have to amend the motion.
I did make the motion, but I can amend the motion if you, you think you want a little longer.
Yeah, I would think it'd be a lo, a little longer would be in the best interests of Rose.
Okay.
Okay, so month of May?
We could make the motion to amend it to the month of May, first meeting in the month of May.
Okay, fine.
Do we have a second?
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
No.
No.
Motion passes.
Okay.
Review of the planning commission. Present the facts and compare with other municipalities. Uh, Carl, this one, I'm gonna hand off to you, too.
Okay, uh, I'm past my time limit.
Just go as fast as you can.
Okay, I anticipate fifteen minutes, Mr. Mayor, on this. Do you want me to, I can, we can delay this, put it off. It might make, uh, I can delay this.
Do we have a motion to postpone the review of the planning commission?
I move to postpone, um, Mr. Richards' discussion on the planning commission to the, uh, last meeting in April.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Carl. With that, we'll move on to the budget.
Is there anybody else who wanted to speak?
Is there, was there anyone else who wanted to speak to the budget?
A couple of things. Um, I did receive some phone calls, and I just wanna make sure that, um, it's clear. Uh, with respect to the budget, Chief, I wanna go back to the raise that was given to the bookkeeper. I did get a phone call, and I do recall calling you and discussing this, so I just wanna make sure everybody understands, 'cause, um, I don't think I completely understood either that night. The bookkeeper got a raise in July of two thousand seventeen, is that correct?
Yes.
And that was a three percent raise?
Yeah, as I indicated at the meeting when council approved the raise.
Was that raised based on, and personal evaluation?
I wasn't, I wasn't personally involved in that raise, so I don't know.
So, you came to council for another three percent raise for this individual for, in, in January? So, that raise was passed, so this one individual in a six-month period has received a six percent raise. Is that correct?
A little over six months, yes.
Yeah, well, it's a little bit over six percent, too, because the second raise that was given is based on a higher salary than back in, in July. So, my question is, is it anticipated that the same employee will get another three percent raise in July, totaling her raises in one year of nine percent?
That will be evaluated in July.
Okay. I just wanna let you know that many, many individuals that I, I ran into a lot of people this weekend in this six percent raise, um, I just wanna make sure council understands that not a lot of employees in this city have been given a six percent raise ever. Um, I'm not quite sure I understand why she got it. Um, as, uh, we'll tell you that, uh, there's a lot of employees in this city that are doing a lot of things that they were not hired to do, but, uh, especially DPW and the water department, those guys chipped in and did extremely well, and, uh, not one of them I, that I know of has come and asked forward for additional monies because they were asked to do something that wasn't part of their job description. Uh, the, the problem is, you have one employee, and it is festering, I'm letting you know. This is festering with the employees, and I don't blame them. Um, I, there, there are employees that are upset about this, but this is a lot of money to give to somebody. My husband hasn't had a raise in two years, and he's in the private sector. So, um, I mean, you're recommended what you're recommended, but, uh, I, I just think this is probably gonna backfire a little bit, 'cause there are employees that are not happy. Uh, next, uh, I'm going to attach, uh, some documents that were sent to me by a wonderful, wonderful individual in the city, and this is about wrestling with pension debt, so I will provide this to you, Lisa, and you can attach it to the minutes. Um, it's a very, very good article that he referred to me, and it's dealing with pension debt, and I think that's probably a good thing, uh, that we should take another look at in terms of being serious about dealing with the pension. I next wanna ask regarding the budget is the write-off. Uh, we were sent a, a memo or whatever stating that fifty thousand dollars was written off. Can you sort of discuss that a little bit? How did that happen? How did that get uncovered? There was a write-off. It had to do with escrow fees.
Sure, I have a statement prepared for that, I believe, uh, for the manager's report.
So, if that, is, is that all you had, Maggie, and we'll just move on?
Yeah, yeah, that's all I have with, with that.
Okay. Did anyone else have anything for the budget?
I, I have a quick question.
Go ahead.
In regards to, um, SLARA, do we, do we know if they are for sure moving out this summer or not?
They have a meeting coming up on the twenty-eighth, and Amy Allen advised me that she would let us know subsequent to that meeting. I had a rather lengthy discussion with her, because there's a significant difference between the less than one thousand dollars rent that the city receives for the old library building, three eighteen West Lake, versus the Duncan disposal property where SLARA will be paying over five thousand dollars per month.
Okay.
Director Allen assured me that SLARA has the fund balance to be able to pay that amount of money for up to five years. Uh, at some point, perhaps the city would wanna reevaluate the contribution the city makes to SLARA every year if they, in fact, have such a huge fund balance.
Okay.
Councilmember Kurtswell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, at this time, is it confirmed that they're definitely going to Duncan Disposal? Is that where they're going? Or is that just talk?
That is the property they are looking at. She told me she would advise me, subsequent to their meeting on the twenty-eighth of this month, the sample contract that they are looking at is with Duncan Disposal for property on Griswold Road.
Okay, um, I'm gonna have to disqualify myself from any further discussions. I'll speak with my client tomorrow, but I have a conflict of interest.
Anyone else with anything for the budget? Okay, we'll move on to the manager's report. Chief?
Okay, uh, first up is Witch's Hat Brewing Company, has their annual Saint Patrick's Day party coming up, is scheduled for Saturday, March seventeenth, from noon until midnight. The police department and the fire department have both reviewed their application for outdoor service and forwarded favorable, a favorable recommendation to the Michigan Liquor Control Commission. So, I bring that up so council knows that I've signed off on the outdoor service application.
So, I bring that up so council knows that I've signed off on the outdoor service application. Item two, which is the item that Councilmember Kurtzwell was questioning, I discovered billing and accounting issues associated with consultant charges such as planning, engineering, and legal relating to building projects in the city. City Code, Chapter Two, Article Eight, Section Two dash three oh one, mandates procedures for review fee escrow deposits. At this time, it appears that processes were not previously fully implemented to comply with the ordinance and recover consultant fees paid by the city that should have been charged against escrow accounts. It should be noted that accounting records indicate as of June thirty, 2016, fifty thousand dollars in review fees was written off as uncollectible. Accounting records also indicate that thirty-eight thousand four hundred and six dollars in consultant fees have yet to be invoiced for recent or current projects. I am taking action to ensure that appropriate processes are put in place regarding establishment of and charges against review fee escrow accounts. Questions?
I have a question, but it's not pertaining to that, so are you finished with the manager report, or should I hold off until the end?
Couple more items.
Whatever. No, no, go ahead.
Okay. And this relates to an item previously discussed, but I selected Utilities and Public Works Superintendent Mike Bovin to attend a two-day training session conducted by SEMCOG regarding grant writing. The four hundred and forty-five dollar cost of the training will be covered by a SEMCOG scholarship arranged by Councilmembers Kennedy and Kurtzwell. Once trained, Mike will be able to check for available grants and complete applications for those that fall within his area of responsibility. Additionally, he will forward other grant information to the interim city manager, who will then assign follow-up to appropriate individuals. And I have one other quick item.
Could I ask you a question about that one?
Certainly.
I was hoping that when Mr. Bovin is done with all that training, that you might be able to compare SEMCOG's access to what we've been paying for from a commercial outfit to be able to get this grant access that nothing has really come out of, so.
I would submit that my civis has been severely underutilized. That's the other grant program.
Well, I'm just hoping that if the breadth of SEMCOG's is as broad as what the one we paid for, I'd just assume we end up saving our money and using SEMCOG's access.
Understood. Lastly, for the manager's report, came in on Saturday and completed and submitted a Risk Avoidance Program, or RAP, Grant, application to the Michigan Municipal Risk Management Authority, MMRMA. The grant will potentially cover fifty percent of the cost of the recently approved supervisory control and data acquisition system for the water and wastewater departments. The potential amount of reimbursement under the grant is fourteen thousand dollars.
That's awesome.
And we will stand by to hear from Murma on that one.
Councilmember President?
So, I had a question for you regarding the SRO, and this is something that came up in light of the recent events in Florida, but then, again, today, it came up. I had parents, but I also had residents in other communities, Lyon Township, reach out to me and say, "Hey, what are your thoughts on this? Is this something?" 'Cause originally, last year, I had brought that to the table and had requested that we have an SRO put back into South Lyon High, just to even the playing field, because South Lyon East has an SRO. I thought it would be only fair for South Lyon High to have one, too. And again, in light of the recent events that have occurred, I think it's just peace of mind for everyone, and I wanted to see what the Police Department has been doing. If you could just highlight the efforts on behalf of our police officers, and then whether you think we could, should, or could add this to the agenda for the next meeting as a discussion piece.
Certainly. I believe we're one of the, if not the only, one of very few police departments in the entire country that provides the level of service to the school district that we do, to include uniformed personnel at every public school in the city, every day at arrival and dismissal times, when we have, in public safety terms, a target-rich environment, the children are outside, not in a secured facility, there are uniformed officers present to watch over the children, make sure they get safely into the school. Then, if it's not arrival or dismissal time, we also do at least one walkthrough of every school every day. We also have unscheduled or random surveillance of schools within the city by plainclothes personnel, to include myself and/or our detective. So, there is a very high level of service already provided. We also have a very fast response time, as was evidenced by the malfunction, system malfunction, unplanned lockdown at South Lyon High School today. We wound up having to do a room-by-room clearance because the school district was unable to verify the cause of the lockdown activation. As council will recall, I spoke favorably toward the possibility of putting a South Lyon police officer into South Lyon High School. Unfortunately, the economics didn't work, and the school district was unwilling to budge on the amount of their contribution, which was significantly less than the amount that the services for that SRO would cost. I have to say, I was totally ambushed tonight, which is unfortunate. I don't know at what school board meeting, I don't know if it was a publicly posted meeting, that this school board, that this SRO by a county sheriff, sheriff's deputy was approved, but I think the school district could have extended the courtesy to a police department that provides them a lot of service, the courtesy of speaking to us first and discussing that, and the courtesy to city council to come in and say, "Can we talk about this again?", not coming into city council and saying, "This is the way it's going to be, and we're bringing in an outside law enforcement agency." And we'll be having a discussion with the undersheriff early tomorrow morning regarding that subject.
Do you think it would behoove us as a council to maybe us be the ones to reach out to the board, to the school board, and even Lyon Township? Hey, let's all just have a discussion about it, and just kinda see where things go? Because I, I think it's important that we do bring this up and discuss it. I don't think it should just be amongst ourselves. I think we should incorporate the school board and Lyon Township as well. And if we're the ones to reach out and extend the olive branch, and there's no impropriety, we just wanna see where everyone's at, and kind of just test the waters, I don't think it would, I don't think it would hurt just to open up discussion, but I don't wanna be speaking for council. I would hope that, I'm just one of seven, so council feel free to jump in.
I think it would be very appropriate for the governing bodies and school administration to speak to each other, and I'm disappointed that that didn't occur before the school board came in tonight in the manner in which they did.
I understand.
Councilmember Kurtzwell?
Thank you. I was a little surprised myself, but I will say, the schools are the responsibility of the school district, not you. That school board and that administration is responsible for the children, their care, their welfare. The ultimate legal responsibility rests with the school district. Now, I don't know what's been going on. I wasn't present, heard it tonight for the first time, but somebody made a decision, and I think that's their province, to decide how they are going to protect their children. And if you're gonna stand in the way, Chief, on a decision that has been made by them, they were elected to take care of the children in the school district, not me. They were. And if some reason, they were getting communications, I don't know, I can only imagine the emails that those people were getting, then they should be permitted to make decisions that they see are fit for the welfare of the children that they have been given the responsibility for in terms of caring. Now, if you've got a problem with an Oakland County Sheriff, then I say, check the ego at the door. I really do, because somebody is willing to step forward and pick up the tab for what, two months? We can live with it. We haven't even had a budget meeting yet, not until March twenty-eighth. So, let's get through our budget, and then find out what we've got to play with, find out where we're gonna be next year. But to sit here and accuse anybody for solving a problem, I think I'm gonna have a real problem with that. We talked about SEMCOG, and Steve and I were at a meeting with the guy from SEMCOG. Take a guess what's in their brochure. I brought it with me tonight, so I thought we were gonna talk about SEMCOG. Government effectiveness and collaboration, generate fiscal stability and sustainability, leverage shared resources with neighboring communities. Well, we don't do that, because we don't talk to anybody in the other communities, because the history of this city has been to alienate every other community around us that nobody wants to help South Lyon. Sat on an island, and here's where you're at. We don't even have a city manager, for Pete's sake. And people are getting upset because somebody had some foresight to say enough is enough over there in South Lyon? Just get a resource officer in, and we'll deal with it in June. Says here, implement creative problem-solving. It's right here in SEMCOG's literature. It's right here. So, I'm gonna stand behind whatever happened. I will call the school board tomorrow, find out what happened, what went on. I'll do my own, but you know what? They have the legal responsibility for taking care of those kids. And if that's the decision they made, that they feel is in the best interest of the parents in their district, then that is their decision. Sit down and talk to them, see what they have to say. But for now, it sounds like to me, somebody is starting on March first, and I would not stand in the way of that Oakland County Sheriff going into that school. That's just the way it is. That's just how I see it.
Mr. Mayor, comment? Chief Collins?
I'll keep it brief. Collaboration is a two-way street.
Thank you, Chief.
I got a question.
Councilmember Richards?
Chief Collins, what triggered my interest last Friday was this business of the escrow funds that we've discussed. I understand it since I've talked with Lori more than I did at that time. I'm still foggy on some of it. Do you think we'll ever find out, in your opinion, how it could have gone on for years, that we, that nobody accounted for paying the bills or asking them to put up the money for their share of the bill? How did it happen?
In interviewing the former zoning administrator and the former administrative assistant to the city manager and the city clerk, they both indicate that while they were somewhat tracking some of the information, that the city manager never specifically assigned anybody to bill as required by ordinance.
Okay. Councilmember Kurtzwell?
Thank you. I had an opportunity to look at the ordinance. Says the city shall maintain the records regarding the escrow deposits and the balances, and shall authorize dispersment. To me, that appears to be an accounting function. If the bookkeeper, or whoever, was maintaining those escrow accounts, first of all, let's get to the basics, were the, were escrow accounts being maintained?
I'm still looking into that.
Well, somebody must know, because you know that fifty thousand dollars was there last June. So, somebody was maintaining the records.
That amount was written off by the auditors at the direction of the city manager.
And that's what's gonna be my next question, 'cause I put that in an email to Plant Moran. Who has authority to authorize write-offs, particularly in the amount of fifty thousand dollars?
Well, that was my question also, and that's why I'm looking into it.
Okay, so that's another policy. However, the escrow accounts were being maintained, 'cause somebody had an accounting, fifty thousand dollars.
Some spreadsheets were being maintained, they were not being properly billed.
Okay, but whose function is it to bill?
It would be whoever's function that the city manager assigned to do it.
Who in City Hall has the ability and the experience to do the billing?
An administrative assistant could have done it, a zoning administrator could have done it, or the bookkeeper.
Or the bookkeeper, okay.
But we're not throwing the bookkeeper under the bus. She was not assigned to do it.
Okay, this is the problem in this city. This is part of the problem. A current labor force does not sit there and say, "I'm only supposed to do this." The twenty-first century labor force has to have broad-based skills to pitch in and do what needs to be done. I can't imagine any employee sitting on fifty thousand dollars and not coming forward to city council or somebody and saying, "You know what? I'm about ready, I don't know what to do with this fifty thousand, I haven't gotten direction from my boss." Why didn't somebody raise the flag and say, "What do I do with this money"?
Excuse me?
What I can tell you, as soon as I became aware of it, I did bring it forward.
A year, almost a year later, okay. Thank you.
That's not true. I haven't been in this position even two months.
Okay, my next question is, is how much time are you spending over here at City Hall? How many hours a week?
The majority of my time, probably at least thirty-five hours a week.
Okay.
Oh, wow.
And I might add that I'm coming in at seven AM and starting my work at the Police Department and not leaving City Hall till after five.
Okay. Was there an incident reported at City Hall last week where a resident came in and caused a disturbance that you're aware of?
Trying to remember it, I don't recall now, but I'm not saying there wasn't.
Was a threat made, or was somebody, anybody come in and say anything to the employees or anything? Chief, what, sorry.
I can respond to it.
No, Murma responded. I, I believe I may have heard something, that there was a, an individual that...
Yeah, I recall the individual now.
Okay. Sorry, go ahead.
Yes, there was.
What's the status of that? I mean, I...
The issue was resolved, it was a billing issue. I stood by while he came back, and he left without incident.
Okay. These things bother employees, I just wanna make sure you know. These things bother employees, is there...
And that's why I stood there the whole time that he came back the second time.
I'd like to know when this happens. I don't wanna hear it through the grapevine, I'd like to hear it from you.
That's an operational issue, I'm not discussing every operational issue with council.
I'd like to know if an employee is being threatened at all by anybody, I would like to know.
If council as a body would like to give me direction, I will follow it.
Did you let the school district over here know that there was a threat over here?
It wasn't a threat.
Employees interpret things differently, Chief.
That's enough. Councilmember Kurtzwell, we'll move forward to council comments.
I have a couple of questions.
Sorry, go ahead, Ms. Walton.
Chief, there's two businesses downtown that both recently closed their doors, and I believe they sat on the DDA. Did we get official resignations from them?
We have a resignation from one. Mr. Donahue sent emails to both requesting resignations. Last I heard, we received only one.
Okay.
Does anyone else have anything for Chief? Okay, now we'll move on to council comments. Glenn, start us off.
Well, timing didn't work out well, but we had some guests from the school board, and I just wanted to, I have to speak to my disappointment for that the school board's decision to back out of the Safe Routes to Schools program. This is, it's at the brink of the city and the township both getting to be able to go through the bid process to find out how much it would cost to accomplish the things that had been formulated, engineered, and spec'd to accomplish, providing safe routes, just as the acronym speaks to, safe routes for kids to be able to get from their homes to schools. In the meantime, it seems to me that the objective of the school board, and this is, maybe this is just a little bit too spy movie-ish, but the idea that once they... maybe this is just a little bit too spy movie-ish, but the idea that once they were able to get their, their traffic signal that allows them to have a more scheduled and reliable scheduling of their transportation, they suddenly seem to have lost interest in the idea of nurturing along and, and carrying their weight. After RCOC, the city and the township provided their chunk of the money to get that signal in there, we still have kids that are going to be walking in the street among people driving to work, people driving their children to Sayre, and, and the buses now that can, in a nice scheduled manner, make it through that intersection. I just find it very disappointing, and as part, part of the partners, it just seems hard to believe that they would reallocate funds, is the description that I was given, from their budget for what was supposed to be their chunk of safer routes to schools. So it's just really disappointing that that had taken place. I would love them to revisit the idea, and maybe they, they could reconsider that. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Carl?
I knew a little bit about that last year, Glenn. As I understood it, they were into the process when the, the federal mandate was that they put up a bridge that cost a million and a half.
That was the city's chunk, and that wasn't, that was pulled off the table.
Okay. That was just my understanding, and that was the main reason why the school backed out. Well, I'd just like to say, in closing, thank you wonderfully to our police department and fire department and DPW to help us get through this last session that we had with the snowplow, the snow and how it was, a new man coming in here. You know, not knowing just exactly what our situation was, but he got everything wrapped up, got the big piles of snow moved on the streets and, and really helped us out, okay? I'm very, very thankful in that regard. Thank you, that's it, yeah.
Oh, thank you, Carl. Mr. Kennedy?
As already kind of been mentioned a little bit tonight, during the past two weeks, Councilmember Kurtswell and I met with the SEMCOG representative, and he, he made us aware of a number of sessions, training sessions, classes, and so forth that they offer. And one of them being the, the grant writing class that Mr. Bovin's going to be availing himself of. So there's, there's a number of opportunities to make use of some of the materials they have available. Actually, I've scheduled myself for one of the training sessions coming up this week. In addition, they have a quarterly publication that highlights, you know, things that are happening in various cities within the SEMCOG region. And Councilmember Kurtswell mentioned that the hotel might be a good, you know, good feature article for that. So we, we adjourned to the hotel following the meeting for lunch, and Cory at the hotel actually had a chance to speak to the SEMCOG representative and, you know, take him around and show him everything that's been accomplished, highlight the, the community participation that took place in rebuilding the hotel, you know, helping to actually perform some of the work there, provide some of the materials that have been used there and so forth. And we're definitely hopeful that that individual will return and actually feature the hotel in that publication in the near future. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Kurtswell?
Yes, sort of writing them out. First of all, I would like to thank Steve for, for the workshop or whatever we had with SEMCOG. I think what was important to me was how the information from SEMCOG was not getting into the city. I'm disappointed not only in our county commissioner who sits over here on the SEMCOG board, I don't recall him ever coming to a city council meeting and talking about all the advantages that SEMCOG has. He's only two blocks away. And clearly, there was no communication with respect to management that has been out on medical. This is a very valuable organization. I'm only the alternate. Steve's doing a great job in terms of being the delegate. And hopefully, we can reset that button and get the city back in where most communities are, and that's very active with SEMCOG. My next comment has to do with, I am going to call the school board and speak with them tomorrow, but I do want to thank all those individuals that worked behind the scenes. Obviously, something was done behind the scenes. And I'd like to thank them and the residents of Lyon Township who are stepping forward and thinking about the community as a whole, as a region, rather than looking at their fiefdoms and their own personal political little kingdoms that they may have. I think that South Lyon, and everybody knows it, we have issues over here. We are rebuilding and stabilizing about every fiscal quarter, but we have a long way to go. But I think that the leadership that was shown by Lyon Township ought to be commended and not criticized. It ought to be welcomed, and each and every one of us ought to be following in their footsteps and finding out. And that includes Green Oak Township, and that includes Northfield, and that includes Salem. All these communities need to get together and assist South Lyon in some form of providing reimbursement to our South Lyon Police Department, because many of these students are going to the South Lyon schools. We have students in the high school over here where this resource officer is going from Lyon Township, from Salem, from Green Oak. All these communities need to start kicking in and start being responsible for assisting in school safety. But I will, for one, thank them tremendously. Put a phone call into Lyon Township tomorrow. I don't need to know who was involved, but I think it's important to say thank you to each and every one of them. And I would hope, chief, that you don't stand in the way. You don't make them feel like they're stepping in on your jurisdiction. I think it's time to start cooperating regionally and understand that right now, we have some limitations. And if somebody's willing to pick up the tab, let them. It's two and a half months. Next, chief, I'm a little bit surprised to hear that you're spending a lot of time over here at City Hall. I think I'd like to put on the agenda for next week that we begin looking for a more permanent interim city manager. I will tell you, over the weekend, many, many individuals came up to me and are clearly aware, so it's not a secret, that the city manager may not be coming back until mid-June. I heard from everybody. And somehow, I find it unusual that it's always the city of South Lyon that's the last to know, including the city attorney. So obviously, it's been out there for a while. People have been talking about it. One woman thought her surgery went bad. I said, "I don't know what the issue is. I don't know anything except what you're telling me." So that's what people are telling me. So I think it's time that we, we pull in as an interim city manager that can spend 50 to 60 hours. The city really needs a lot of help. And band-aiding these things, we need somebody here that can just really, really focus on city issues and get somebody in here who has a good background in labor and employment. Let me see what else I had on here. And last, I'd like to see put on the city agenda, because it's, looks like it's not going away, and I think it's something we should probably start dealing with, is I would like to see if sometime in May, we could have a seminar for all employees, all elected officials, all persons on commissions to begin understanding the 21st century requirements of a modern labor force. That includes training and sexual harassment. That includes dealing with the issues that one meets in the labor force, including discrimination, understanding how you interview, whether it's interviewing a candidate for a commission responsibility. I think the time has come that we just need to move forward and deal with the issue because it's not going away. And I think it does a disservice to the city that we sit here, week after week, knowing that the city has never done this before. Isn't that interesting? Why does that surprise anybody? And, and we need to move forward with this training and get it out there so that when issues start coming with the Department of Civil Rights, we can show that we are the responsible organization, that we have taken the steps to train our workforce, rather than sitting there and waiting once again for the state to tell us what to do. I think everybody, everybody from every community, and I have been with people, I would say, I'm going to be with 40 people tomorrow night, I was with a couple hundred people two weeks ago, every single community said, "Why aren't you dealing with this? Get this issue behind you." It doesn't hurt, it's not going to hurt our case. What it's showing is that the city is moving forward with affirmative action to start dealing with an issue that we know is a problem. It's not, I'm not going to lay blame on anybody, okay? It's over with, it's done. Let's do what's professional, and let's get the training out. Get somebody in here, have your seminar Thursday night, Saturday morning, so all employees can attend. Talk about Bullard Wiki, talk about your employment files, talk about your employment records and your, and your personnel evaluations, which should not be discussed with other members of city council. No member on city council should be reviewing any employee's personnel records, which I found that in the minutes. So obviously, we all need some help. I will be the first to step up and sign up. And I think just a seminar with materials, but I think you gotta move on this. Quit kicking the can down the road like, like you've been doing for 30 years. Start dealing with the problems. Solve these problems. You don't solve this problem by having employees out there in the field and still not knowing what's the right thing. I sat here three meetings ago and talked about an ethics ordinance and said, do any, I said to Ron over there, "Did, did you even know we had an ethics ordinance? The poor kid doesn't even know we have an ethics ordinance. Employees don't even know about it, and you better, because there's been an ethics violation." It's not with anybody on council. So please, put that on the agenda, and let's get it going. Just stop it, just move on. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Presian?
Okay, so I would like to start off by saying that there is a K-9 Veterans Day event that's coming up at the War Memorial, and that is going to be on April 28th at 12 o'clock. And that's going to be a good event, especially because you're going to be able to hear the stories of our K-9 heroes. So mark your calendar, that's April 28th at noon at the War Memorial. And then, there's also another dog-related event, Walk, Wag, and Run, which is a 5K, but it can also be a one-mile run if you're not interested in running, or a one-mile walk. And that helps raise money for all the homeless, abused, injured animals, and all that money goes to the Huron Valley Humane Society. And that's coming up on Saturday, May 19th, so another good one to mark your calendar for, in Rolling Hills Park. I wanted to address the vacancies available for both, well, for all, Parks and Rec, Board of Ethics, zoning, Cable Commission, DDA. We have a few different committees now that have vacancies. And I guess my question is, how do we plan on filling these vacancies? It's, I don't think it's just enough for us to announce it at meetings. Do we need to take to Facebook? Do, how do we reach the community on a different level and get some participation generated? I think that's important. So having the participation, having those vacancies filled, it's just going to give us more insight from people, better ideas, all of that. I would also like to thank the police chief and all of the police officers for what you've done today, being on your toes, being alert, addressing the drill even though it was a malfunction and it wasn't planned. That's nothing that is in anyone's control. It wasn't planned. But you addressed it, you got there as fast as you can with your, your team. And I also saw on Facebook, within half an hour, it was posted on Facebook for everyone to see, "Hey, this is the situation, it's all fine, hi." So that's important, and I do give you credit. And I don't think that you're standing in anyone's way for anything. I think you're doing your job to the best of your abilities, and I would hate for you to think that we're taking, taking advantage of you or taking you for granted, because it's not easy being both police chief and interim city manager. That's a, that's a lot to handle, a lot to juggle. So thank you for all of your efforts and everything that you're doing. The SRO issue, though, I do hope that if, if you do collaborate with Lyon Township and speak with Lyon Township or the school board, can you just give us some feedback and let us know what that is? Or if we're going to have a meeting or anything like that, can you just keep us posted?
Certainly.
Thank you. I wanted to also thank Steve, because the SEMCOG emails have been incredibly helpful. That's how we've been able to learn about grants that we had no idea about before, or even just training sessions that have come up, that again, we would not have known had you not sent an email out letting us know these updates. So please keep them coming, and they're very much appreciated. With that being said, I think that covers everything except for, I wanted to thank all of the speakers who came out tonight. I do think it's important, good, bad, or ugly, to hear what you have to say. So I do appreciate you taking the time to speak. Thank you. Have a good night.
Councilmember Walton?
Thank you. You know, one of the first things I have written down in my notes is to thank Mike for his service. I'm hearing a lot of great things from your employees, all, all kinds of different people around the city. You're doing a fantastic job, so we really want to thank you and let you know that it's not going unnoticed. So just, just keep, keep going, I'm glad where you have you.
That's what I'm here for, to serve, so.
We appreciate that. Couple of other events that I noticed in town that I just wanted to bring highlight to, we have that Marvel comic movie showing the blockbuster hit, Black Panther. If anybody has not seen it, it's showing uptown. It's a great movie. Go down, see a movie. Maybe have restaurant, dinner in one of the restaurants in the downtown area. And the other thing I wanted to mention was the South Lions, Salem South Lyon District Library, they have lots of amazing programs. I was on their website this week, checking out what's coming up, and there are some wonderful things coming up. And I really like their slogan, "Imagine the Possibilities," because let me tell you, there are some great possibilities out there for everybody, all ages. And on my final and more serious note, I just want to thank the school board for addressing the SRO, getting someone in there. I know it probably did feel like a little stiff to you, chief, but at least we got somebody in there, and we're going to take care of it, and we're going to make our parents and our students feel very comfortable at the end of the day, and I think that's what's most important.
Absolutely.
So I do look forward to hearing what you find out and how we move going forward, but at least for now, everyone's comfortable and sleeping a little tighter tonight. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you. I want to reiterate what Councilmember Presian said, and I know you're right, probably mentioning it at the council meetings isn't getting it done, but we have a lot of seats open on these commissions and boards, and I know there's a lot of people that care about this community, and I would encourage you to look into this avenue and getting involved. There is information on the website, there's information available up here if you're in the neighborhood. Not even everyone has to live in the city. Some of this stuff, you can live in the township and be a part of the community. And I would encourage people to do that. Also, just, I'm a huge Winter Olympics fan, and I wanted to take a moment and congratulate the USA Women's Hockey Team on winning gold over Canada, what a game. And then our good friends on the Men's Curling Team, winning gold for the first time for the Americans, which was pretty cool. So, and then really quick, I did finally end up making it over to see our friends at Sayre and Brummer, and they drew a bunch of awesome pictures, and they had a lot of great questions. And I, I know Bob's gone, but I got to tell you, there's a big ground swell for a dog park in our elementary schools. I'll tell you what, though, once we started to work our way down that, there was also a ground swell for a cat park. So we, we might have to have, you know, work something out there. But, so thanks to all those guys and girls that came out and had great questions over at Sayre and Brummer, the second graders, it was great to see you all. And with that, I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose.